We appreciate you being here. This is our first meeting in February. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by an invocation for Pastor Thomas Rogers, and then a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father and Father, we thank you again for this day. We thank you for these, your people that have gathered here, Lord, to be a part of what's happening and to hear the legislation of our city. We thank you for our mayor and the council that you have centered around her and the togetherness that you give them as your people that govern the affairs of us all, near and in our city. We pray and ask you, Lord, to give them wisdom and knowledge, and give them a sense of welfare for the citizens and those that are gathered around the city. We thank you, Lord, for what you have done for us already in our city, and how you are using them to move us forward, to accomplish great things as a city, and to be inclusive and to love all people. We ask you to forgive and to direct us in your way. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Again, we appreciate everyone being here. Our first official order of business is the approval of the official agenda with consented items, and I know that there are a couple of modifications that I'd like to highlight and have made, assuming the board is comfortable with that. First item is under Mayor's Business. We have the consideration approval of advertising for letters of interest. The date on that, really, in order to accommodate the needs for the school district for their first meeting, their first official meeting in March, is a deadline for letters of interest being 5:00 p.m. on February the fourteenth, which is a Thursday. If that, if no one has any problem with that, then we'll do that under the consent, just changing the deadline.
Mayor, may I be recognized on that?
Vice Mayor, you may.
Yeah, I had made a note on that because that's going to comply with the statute because we have customarily made the appointment at the second meeting in February because that term starts on that first Saturday in March. So that's very good. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. And the next item is under Board Business, Item D. There was a consideration to call for a public hearing to adopt an ordinance for hunting guidelines, and it has been brought to our attention that the municipality has been preempted by the state. And so what I would like us to do then, if the board is in agreement, is to revise our ordinance eighty-two dash six regarding the discharge of firearms to reflect the state statute, so that we are in compliance with state statute, if the board is willing to adopt that adjustment to that particular call for an ordinance.
Mayor, I object to that being on the consent.
Okay.
And the reason I object, because I need to see that ordinance, and this is a very substantive change from the current agenda item. If we're going to take it up tonight, I need to see that ordinance because you're calling for a public hearing to be inconsistent with the state statute. So this is a very radical change here, so I need to see it if we're going to take it up tonight.
Sure. Well, this is just calling for that public hearing for the next board meeting, but that's fine. It'll be removed from the consent agenda. Not a problem. Okay, do I have, do I have any modifications to the consent agenda or the agenda from the, any of the other board members? I see Alderman Miller. See your hand?
Miller, or, excuse me.
What did I say?
Mayor. I said Miller. Mayor. Under approval of the Board, Board of Alderman Minutes, I'd like to add all three of those to consent agenda if I could.
Okay. Is there any objection to adding those three sets of minutes to the consent agenda? Seeing none, those will be added to the consent agenda. Any other changes, Alderman Miller?
That's all. Thank you.
All right. Vice Mayor, did I see your hand, Vice Mayor?
Oh, yes, several, Mayor. I want to start on the Mayor's Business. Want to remove Item Number C. I just need to do some type of housekeeping when I get there. I'm not in opposition to it.
Okay.
I want to move that from the agenda.
All right.
On, over on the Board Business, Attorney, with regard to that revised Item Ten D, I'd like to see that before we take it up, that ordinance the mayor want to call a public hearing for. You know, I think we all really need to, so we can be very scholarly about it. Mayor, on the Board Business, B, I see that, and this is a good idea about the recycling, but it, that, the motion does not indicate who's going to make the appointment and how that's going to be made. I think that'd be, be good for the board to know, include myself, as to how that appointment is going to be made and who's going to make the appointment. So I'm not in objection to that.
You want to remove it from consent for discussion?
Yes, and whatever you recommend. I don't, I don't have any recommendation, but I just think the board needs to be involved in that process.
Absolutely. We'll remove it from consent and we can have a discussion.
I guess further, Mayor.
Sure.
Mayor, on information technology, I want to remove Item Number I.
Okay. H-I?
Yes, ma'am. We just want to discuss, Mr. Clemens just answered some questions. And also on the, under the parks, I'm not, Mr. Logan, I'm not in objection to that. Very, very great work there, Mayor. I think the board needs to be aware of these two items, and when we get to those items, Mr. Logan, I would like to, just to highlight to the public, the information you have as part of the authorization history. I think that's very valuable, and that there could be some things happening that the public needs to be aware of.
Are you wanting to remove both of those from consent?
Yes, ma'am, just for that information only.
Okay.
And one last thing. Just allow me a moment to indulge, Mayor.
Sir.
Mayor, I'm going to the other floor at this time. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other changes to either, Alderman Miller?
Mayor, I would like to move Item B to A under Department Business.
The zoning matter?
Yes, the request for preliminary and final plat, I would like to move that up to under Item Eight, Public Hearing, under A, right after we have that public hearing. Go ahead and vote on that matter.
Okay. Do we have any objection to moving that item to just under Item Eight A? All right, seeing no objection, we'll move Item Eleven, B to A, to just after the Item Eight A. Okay? Anything else? Any other changes? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the consented items as modified.
So move.
Motion for Alderman Miller. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Little. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And with that, I will read the consented agenda items. First item is consideration of the minutes of the January second, twenty nineteen, regular meeting of the mayor and the Board of Alderman of the City of Starkville, Mississippi. Consideration of the minutes of the January eleventh, twenty nineteen, work session of the mayor and Board of Alderman of the City of Starkville, Mississippi. Consideration of the minutes of the January fifteenth, twenty nineteen, recess meeting of the mayor and Board of Alderman of the City of Starkville, Mississippi. Then, under Mayor's Business, we have consideration approval of advertising for letters of interest for an appointment to a position on the Starkville Octibah Consolidated School District Board of Trustees with the deadline for the letters of interest being 5:00 p.m. on February the fourteenth, twenty nineteen. Under, still under Mayor's Business, we have consideration of setting an in-person interview for Dr. Simon Kim for the board meeting of February nineteenth, twenty nineteen. Item F is consideration for members of the Mayor's Youth Council to attend the twelfth Annual MML Statewide Youth Leadership Summit in Oxford, Mississippi, on March the first to the second, twenty nineteen, with registration in the amount of twenty-five dollars per person with hotel accommodations at a hundred and nine dollars per night. Item H is consideration approval of a resolution in opposition to the Senate Bill twenty-six eighty-four, expanding the definition of municipal solid waste and impairing the ability of state waste authorities to continue operation and meet financial obligations and allowing waste from profit entities to dispose of waste in ways potentially harmful to public health and natural resources. Under Board Business, we have consideration of the appointment of Jimmy Richardson, the sole applicant, to the Airport Board for a term from January one, twenty nineteen, to December thirty-one, twenty twenty-two. Item C, under Board Business, consideration of the adoption of a concerted community revitalization plan for the City of Starkville. Under Department Business, Airport Business, it's request approval to advertise for leasing airport tillable land located south and west of the runway and taxiway and inside the fenced area for one year for farmland at George M. Bryan Field. Engineer, under Engineering, we have consideration of approving the resolution of a city match for the Mill Street A R C project in the amount of fourteen thousand fifty-two dollars and sixty-four cents. We have request approval to renew a mechanical service agreement with Brislin, Inc., for City Hall. That was under Finance Administration. Under Human Resources, we have request authorization to hire Shalimar Simpson as a driver in the Sanitation and Environmental Services Department. Number two is consideration of approval for Stephanie Halbert to participate in the City of Starkville Educational Assistance Program. Under the Police Department, we have consideration to enter into a grant with the Justice Assistance Grant for fiscal year nineteen, funding in the area of hotspot policing for twenty thousand dollars in overtime hotspot enforcement and a video surveillance camera for seven thousand two hundred and forty-seven dollars. Number two is request approval to allow Officer Rashad Ruff to attend standardized field sobriety testing training, February the twelfth to the fourteenth, twenty nineteen, in Pearl, Mississippi, with advanced hotel costs of two hundred and eighty-two dollars. Under Utilities Department, we have number one, request approval for Madison Smith with the Electric Division of Starkville Utilities to travel to Nashville, Tennessee, to attend the line design and staking two class on February twenty-sixth to the twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen, with advanced mileage, registration, and hotel in the amount of one thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-five cents. Number two is request approval for Todd Giles and A.J. Hollins with the Electric Division of Starkville Utilities to travel to Scottsboro, Alabama, to attend the lineman assessment class on February the seventeenth, twenty-three, twenty nineteen, with advanced registration and a hotel in the amount of eighteen hundred dollars, one thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars. Number three is request approval of lowest and best quotes from Lee's Precast Concrete, Inc., for Phase Two of the approved Pleasant Acres Manhole Material Purchase in the amount of nine thousand six hundred and thirty-six dollars. Last but not least, we have request authorization for Starkville Utilities to initiate a task order, number two, for professional services with Garver, LLC, for bluefield well rehabilitation. And that concludes the consent agenda. All right, the next we go into our agenda is, under Mayor's Comments, we have a new employee introduction, and I think I see her, or I saw her, there she is, in the back, or midway, midway. I get to introduce our newest police officer, Officer Kenya Bibbs. She is, you can come up here. That's okay, that's okay. You are going to be our dare officer. I'm, I'm right about that, aren't I, Captain Ballard? Okay, thank you.
One of two. I'm glad to have you.
Okay, and as we are. Kenya Bibbs is originally from Starkville and is a graduate of Starkville High School. She has a bachelor's degree in general studies from Louisiana Tech University. Before joining the City of Starkville, Kenya worked for the Terrebonne Parish Sheriff's Office as a bailiff and a patrolman. During her free time, Kenya enjoys a variety of activities, including basketball. I'm so glad. Baseball, softball, and spending time with her family. Kenya attends Blackjack Missionary Baptist Church, and please join me in welcoming Kenya. Thank you. All right, and next we have acknowledgment of Planet Recession for the Moncrief Play, Moncrief Park Playground, which delighted to have that and have you here tonight. Gary, you want to do the intro? We have, she have a picture?
Sure. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board, thank y'all. You'll just barrel this just a minute. Yeah, I'd like to thank Trainer McAdams, who is here from Planet Recession, to represent them. Thank them for selecting us as the twenty-eighteen Burke Playground Giveaway recipient for the state of Mississippi, and we have a plat for you.
We do, and there's, there's the before and after. So you can see what a huge difference it has made in our park, over there at Moncrief Park. It's wonderful, and thank you so, so much. I think everybody's been enjoying it ever since it went in, which was, what, middle of December?
Yep.
Got finalized in the middle of December. Cool, so.
Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you again. And while we're there, Joel, will you go to the next picture, which is a picture of the splat, the splash pad? There we go. The splash pad has a new addition, too, and it's the water bucket that was, we've kind of been waiting on that, haven't we? Mr. Logan, waiting on that a while, and they got installed, I believe, this week. So that's a nice addition to what is already a very popular location, that splash pad at JL King Park. So pretty excited to have that little element added to the, added to the programming. So thank you so much. All righty, and that's all I have. Does anyone on the board have anything they wish to highlight or talk about? All right, seeing none, we'll move next to our citizen comments. This is the time when citizens have an opportunity to come and talk to the board. This is not, this is not a time when we normally will interact, but it gives, you have three minutes, if you would give your name and where you, where you live, what ward you're in. Will you have three minutes to provide the board any information that you wish to do so? Mr. Turner?
Good evening to the mayor and board. My name's Avon Turner Ward Seven. To the mayor, to the police chief in absent, and to the, all right, N A C P, then in her absent. All right, the citizens, we, we have had some issues that we would like to address, and that is, in my last meeting, I was saying that the deer pops up late night on North Jackson, and on the Ree Road, right there, and Ree plays in Hostile Road. I think one got hit back here, and the, on Ree Road, they was able to stop before they hit them. But in those two places, it's kind of dark at time, and you can't see, you see them before they see, they'll see you before you see them. Also, the mopeds that we have around town, it's kind of dangerous that they wear dark clothing, and when they dot out on the public, we have to really slam on brakes, let not to hit them. We would appreciate if they would kind of wear clothing that you can see them and hear them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Have anyone else?
I'm Mayor, and all the men and women. My name's Bill Chapman. I'm not yet a citizen of the city. I own four properties in the city, but I live in University Estates, which is now in the county and being considered for annexation. We received an email from our University Estates Homeowners Association saying, if you had some feelings about the annexation, I should come tell them. And I, I see there's going to be some advantages because many of our homes, like mine, are over forty years old. We have private sewer systems, our own septic tanks, and it would be great to be on a city sewer, but that infrastructure is going to take time and, and money. We also enjoy shooting our guns, and I have five acres out there and a big hill with a backdrop, so it's, it's safe, and I'm trained, of course. But I might lose that freedom to discharge my firearm on my own property, but you've, tonight's earlier statement might fix that. Okay. But then the ability to repair my plumbing and repair my electricity and repair, make, make changes to my house, I think is going to be changed by having to report to the city and get approval, et cetera. And so, you know, as, as a non-resident, but a property owner, I've experienced taxation without representation, which I understand is a big thing in the United States. But I'd like to, to, you know, be able to vote in a city. I don't mind being added to the city, but I, I do want the city to know that, that we expect some stuff. We expect some protection. We expect some infrastructure. We expect some, some sewer. And try not to raise the taxes very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. All right, do we have anyone else who wants to come?
Good evening. My name is Anisee Louie. I am the mayor of the Starkville Mayor's Youth Council, and with me, we have the rest of the council. Y'all, please stand.
I know there are a lot of them out there. Thank you.
So I wanted to first say thank you to Ms. Mayor Spruill and to everyone on the board who has funded us and helped us stay together. We have definitely enjoyed being on the council. We love it. We love to help our community. So far, we have had a clothing drive, and this Friday, this Saturday, we are going to Salvation Army for the next consecutive three Saturdays to help out, organize, and do all that we can. We have a lot planned for this year, and we just want to thank everyone who supports us and who's there for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate y'all being a part of the Mayor's Youth Council.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello. I'm Chuck Schump. I live in University Estates. I'm going to follow up with Mr. Chapman's getting some stuff comments. And I understand that y'all want the tax base from retreats, Starkville Ford, the Mike Patel out there, Aspen Heights. We're kind of nestled in the middle, and we're just kind of collateral damage to those guys. What I've looked at is the protection class that we're supposed to be enhanced. We're not going to be a protection class four. We're going to be what's called a four X, because we don't have any hydrants in our neighborhood. You have to be within a thousand feet of a hydrant to be a four. And the water system out there, Clayton Village Water System, can't handle hydrants, not filler plugs, but hydrants. And I know that their area is a certificated area, so they're not going to give it up. So I don't know how y'all plan to address that, but, you know, with the promise of us being a four, we're not going to be there until we have the hydrants. As far as the sewer is concerned, I know East Octibah Wastewater District has been trying to figure out a way to deliver that to us for the past five years. A lot of us have paid our early connection fee, and it's just sitting a ho somewhere. And, and they can't figure out how to do it. And that, that also is a certificated area. So in order for y'all to provide sewer, y'all going to have to go through them somehow to get it done, because that's their area from the Public Service Commission. You know, and I know y'all want a reasonable time to get it done. I know the last annexation, y'all are twenty years into it, and y'all haven't finished it. I don't want to pay tax, it's not true? I'm sorry, I thought it was the last meeting. Oh, it is true. Okay, I'll let y'all figure it out.
We'll, we'll talk about it.
But, but, you know, I don't want to pay city taxes for twenty years with promises, promises. You're going to get this, you're going to get this, and we're just going to sit there and pay it out. That's collateral damage.
Thank you, Mr. Schump. Anyone else? Congratulations, Ms. Haddix, on your N double A C P role?
I'm just coming here to say greetings from the N double A C P. Avon, I am here, and just wanted to say I'm glad to be here and I'm glad to work with you guys to represent the City of Starkville, or the county of Octibah County. Thank you. I'm Melanda Haddix. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm coming along, who behind and who made.
That's all right. You're, you're next up.
Hello.
Ms. Isaac?
Everybody. I didn't say everybody. As you know, I'm coming again to say, we got all this consideration of increasing the monthly sanitation rate by one fifty to sixteen seventy-five, where we know how they go, and the commercial sanitation rate by five dollars a month. The pastor just got through praying. He said a sense of welfare. I don't know if I heard him or not, but it's a sense of welfare, and I'm going to tell you what it is. Keep on increasing, and don't get no service. You're killed. And just like the gentleman just said, you're up five, you're going to be ten more. That's all I got to tell you. But I just want y'all to know, if you're going to increase, try to go through these neighborhoods and look at what you've increased and seen, just look at the neighborhood. And Cane Rowland Hill, yeah, I know you be over there, you know, I know y'all be over there, but you still got to come to Rowland Hill. We got pipes that need cleaning out. We got all kinds of stuff that need be done over there. And I would like for y'all to really consider, you don't have to look at it because I really don't care, but I'm going to talk like I want to talk to you, that we need something that this city can get started. We could, I'm just displeased with all the services that I have received. I'm a homeowner, two taxes, crumble, no money. Got to know what you're doing. You're going to come through, please do something that's real proper, you know, going to make a progress. Right now, we're not doing it. And I look forward to working to, for, for everybody to work together, but we, we're not doing it. And please bring the meeting back. I cannot get up on weekday to y'all meeting because I'm not going to come and disturb the workday section. But bring it back to the meeting. You're going to hire somebody that's real, real proper in our city, and we don't even know who they are. We don't. They going to be community people. Where they from? Way up in West Compton, I don't know. But please, be careful what y'all do. Be careful what you do. When I see this right here, I would like everything to be on it, but I thank you, Vice Mayor, and I do think some of the people that spoke for me because they cleared up some of the stuff, so I won't have to go through there. Also, the Black History Month. I didn't bring my Black History stuff this time, but I'll bring it next time. You know, to say, to all our employees, I mean, everybody, like I say every year, can't help, coffee's black. I didn't make it. You know, but I was just like to say to our black employees, thank you for what you're doing. I just wish some of this would go on your page. You know, that's what I would, so please, I live in Rowland Hill, anytime you want to talk, come on over, we can talk. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Isaac.
Hi, I'm Jim Christman. I live at the University Estates. I wanted to talk about the annexation. I can't really speak for everyone, but for the people that I've spoken to and for my family, I want to let you know that we're against it. And we have several reasons. One is that we just don't want to pay more taxes for basically zero additional service. The second is that we like our freedom. We don't want to be stuck with, under the rules and regulations of the city. I've seen what those entail in many instances, and I don't think they're for us. There's been a lot of talk about the sewers. We signed up for it. Shoot, it's been so long that I can't even remember when we signed up for that, and there's been no progress on that. We've since changed our mind. I also know from experience and talking to some of the people at work, I work at Mississippi State, that the sewer system in Starkville doesn't always work so good, and I had one of my colleagues who had it backed up just recently, and it's been threatening to back up several times since then. My septic tank's not backing up, and I've been there for seventeen years. So taxes, I think that we don't want to pay extra taxes for zero or negative service, and we don't want our freedom curtailed by additional rules and regulations imposed on us.
Good evening, Mayor. My name is John Tolliver. Twenty-six Choctaw Road, Starkville, Mississippi. I understand what the man that stepped before me said because I live in the city and the city sewer line is not working for me. Today is February the fifth. We've been out of our home for five months because the city sewer line backed up into our home. I know this is probably remiss, but I'm going to keep coming to let you know, I know that there's a better job. I really wish that those who are going to be annexed into the city will, will put a little bit of pressure that, because they don't want that problem. I don't want that problem and no one deserves to have that problem. Taxation without representation. I pay the taxes. I pay them, but I'm not being represented as far as what my family needs right now as far as housing. We've moved three times since September and we're still five months and don't know how long away from being back in our home. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toll.
I'm hoping not to be annexed in. I'm in University Estates as well. I'm not speaking for these folks, I'm speaking for me and my wife. I've got a few questions. When is the tooth, or the last annexation going to be completed? It's ridiculous. So we, so if it's 20 years, is it 20 years for us too to pay 20 years taxes? It's absolutely crazy. I'm, I'm very upset about this annexation. Is it worth putting annexation in our area and driving the people out? Because I don't have a problem living in Alabama. I don't have to shop in Starkville, so I don't have to pay city taxes if I don't want to. I can go to West Point. It's not a problem to me. Same distance where I live. And when will the annexation go in effect if this does happen to come through? You keep talking about the fire rating in a four and a five, but I know it's a five-mile radius. I know road miles. I'm with Fire Department. I know that. We're rating, we're re-rating our area right now. I know it's five miles. I'm not crazy. I know Starkville Ford's out of five-mile range from you guys. So is it even worth your stores to close down because they can't afford it? You guys keep saying we're benefiting, living in the county through the city. I don't see that. I would like you to explain that. And one of the last things I want to say is somebody up here made the comment that we would have-
I'm Dr. Potter.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. You guys would have, we would have better fire department and better police department. That's disrespectful to the Sheriff's Department and the fire departments. I get paid zero to come to houses at two o'clock in the morning. Absolutely disrespectful. Somebody else up here made the comment that if the Highlands was not going to be annexed in, they would not vote for annexation. I hope you keep your word on it. And I promise I'll point you out when it, if you, if you vote against it. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Anyone else?
I'm Ronnie Walford, Ward Five. I'm here representing myself and Gene Merkel, so I hope I might get six minutes. But anyway, you should have a letter from Gene Merkel in your box that everybody put in. I live in Northgate Suddivision in the city. Mr. Merkel lives on Old West Point Road, only property next to him. I'm going to hurry to get through this, so I really can't state my case. I bought 36.6 acres less than four years ago in the county for a reason to be in the county. I live in the city now, but outside the county. Had options for other properties in the city, didn't buy them for a reason to be in the county. Mr. Merkel has lived there for 20 years. My complaint is the lines of it, I'm on the back, on the back of the bypass and it's L-shaped and it's, I'm going to be pinned in. Me and Mr. Merkel will be the only two non-commercial places on the south side of Old West Point Road picked in. On the backside of us, there will still be city even if we're not taken in. So we're pinned in and the people on the other side of us, I got 36 acres, will be able to do whatever they want. So I won't have any repercussions. Burning firearms and et cetera like that. And I'll get to that in just a second. That's why I'm trying to hurry. I've talked to Alderman Mayor, Alderman Miller and the mayor. And after the conversation, I felt like there's no way I would be carved out due to viewing coming in on the bypass. But however, the people behind me, it's not going to be taken in or actually on a higher elevation than me. If my trees are missing, they will be seen more than me. I was wanting to be just cut out because there's a very simple line to cut me out and Mr. Merkel out and still keep everything intact. One reason is, I look at Old West Point Road as a community. We're chipping out just a few people and leaving right next to me, within, right next to me, there's five, six, seven, eight properties, probably 1.5 million worth of tax base that's not going to be touched. My properties are $1,060 valued. Okay, so it's not about the money. It cost me $25.79 extra a year. It's not about the money, it's about the control. In saying that, I don't think that I'll ever be cut out, so I'm trying to get the most I can for the book. I know y'all talking about the firearms. I got 30 something acres. I got beavers everywhere. I got animals out there. I got to have a firearm and be able to discharge a firearm for protection. When I'm out there by myself, I got to have a firearm. Burning, a tree falls over the barbed wire fence, the guy, the guy next to me can burn immediately. I will be able to burn in city limits because you can't burn, but I will have to get approval by the fire department.
That's the three minutes, Mr. Chapman.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
So hopefully we'll get another chance to speak. Thank you.
There'll be a number of chances. Anyone else? All right, seeing no one, we'll close, close it for citizens' comments and we will move to public appearances. Our first public appearance is Alderman, former Alderman Dumas, who is making a presentation and having a public hearing on the SMART program with PowerPoint.
That's fine. Thank you all.
You're welcome. Introduce.
Hi. I've got that all in my script.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Board. So as the mayor has asked, I will introduce everybody that's with me. To my right, to your left is Ronnie White. He's my Associate Director of Parking and Transit Services. In the back, we have Tanner Robinson. Tanner is our event coordinator. And then the person that literally makes the wheels on the bus go around is our Transit Manager Larry Graves. Everybody back there. I do appreciate the opportunity to be with you. I mentioned this to Alderman Little the other day and he said, well, I thought you were just here. Well, I was just here. The mayor asked me and Alderman's sister-uncle asked me to be here back in October to go through discussions of our parent transit program specifically. And so tonight is actually a part of our official annual process where we make application to the Mississippi Department of Transportation for our funding. So I will go through the nuts and bolts of our funding. You all have seen it and are aware of it, but it is a requirement that we go through that. We'll talk about our ridership of where we, where we've gone through this past year, our proposed changes for this next year. And then as we are required to do, then I've asked for a public hearing. So obviously, we want to hear comments and thoughts from you, the board, and then to open that up to the audience so they can share their, their comments as well. Being passed around in the back are two sign-up sheets. We do need a record of everybody attending tonight as part of this public hearing and without further ado, I will jump in. So SMART, the Starkville MSU Area Rapid Transit operates under the funding from the Mississippi Department of Transportation by way of the Federal Transit Authority with 5311 rural mass transit funds. This is an annual grant application that's due March 1st. There's an 80, 20% cost share on the operational side, a 50/50 cost share on the operational side. And you, the city, in this past fiscal year has agreed to and approved a $50,000 cash match as part of our local match. And you've also continued to support us with in-kind services of the construction of shelters, maintenance of those, et cetera. So without, without that, we, well, it means a lot to us. We appreciate the support and we'll talk about that a little bit at the, at the end of this. So our system does include fixed routes and flexed routes. Those are technical terms. So on the fixed route side, which most of our routes are, we have a set schedule, set stops, and we must adhere to that schedule. Most of our route times start at 7:00 AM. The ones in the city go to 8:00 PM and they operate Monday through Saturday. Our campus routes operate 7:00 to 6:00 primarily and that's a, most of those are nine-month routes, so operating from August to May. We do have to have what's referred to as a complimentary pair transit program. I know you've heard me mention that and I'll give you some details on that in a minute. And that has to happen within our service area, a mile and a half outside our service area actually. And we must participate in regional and statewide coordination. So we're part of a regional transportation group called EZTAG. Our mobility manager is with the Pearl River and the Choctaw Nation. And the theory there being that they, if anyone in the community needs statewide coordination of transportation, they can contact the regional mobility manager and they will coordinate those efforts. So let's talk about ridership. Every year, I've come to you since we began in 2014. So we wrote our first proposal in fiscal year 12. We began our routes in earnest January of 14. I usually come to you at this point with this slide and say, at this point, we've now carried 3 million riders or whatever. Well, we, we've, we've learned over the last year or two that just an overall magnitude of millions of riders doesn't really mean anything. And so we've got many more metrics that we're now beginning to, to value. I can tell you from December and January of this past year, we've had over 25,000 additional riders than we did the same time the year before. This year, unlike the years previous, we now are having 32% of that ridership in the City of Starkville. Just in last year alone, that meant a total of over 50,000 new riders on city routes. So, you know, when we look at quality of life, which is our funding, which our funding requires, and we look at the details of what that is, I say this every year and, and I know as an MSU employee, I probably, it's probably not the, the biggest thing I need to say, but you know, the fact that we move students on campus is one thing and it's a quality of life issue. But when we look at the needs in the community and we know that we are the only transportation option for individuals in this community, you know, it has a soft spot in our hearts that we are directly impacting quality of life for those in our community. So we appreciate that. Pair transit is where we see that biggest impact with quality of life. This is calendar year 18, the previous were fiscal year. We've had over four, or in calendar year 18, we had over 4,000 unique trips. That averaged out to about 330 trips per month. Growth-wise, and this is something we've been asked about, we, just last year, we had 29 new members. But when you look at the last three months of the year, October, November, December, which is the time at which I came to you and made the presentation about the in-kind cash, or the, the cash match, we actually had had 10 more in that time period. So October, November and December, those three months alone, 10 of those 29 were increases over that time. We had 1,325 wheelchair lifts, so that's individual lifts where we assisted someone in a wheelchair of getting in our vehicle that we knew and for the most part was their only primary way of transportation, and averaging now a little over 100 of those a month. We've done all that, kudos to Larry and his dispatch team, we've done all that with one wheelchair van and one ambulatory van. Now, this is our largest growth sector and it's where we need to and plan to put most of our resources in the coming years, not most of our resources, but a lot of our new resources. And so we actually have three new vans on order so we can help meet the need of this system alone. Goals for this year. Number one, approve efficiency. When you look on campus and you look in the City of Starkville, you know that at given times on Highway 12 or Blackjack Road or wherever you might be, that you probably don't get where you want to go as fast as you would like. We are not immune to that. And so when we look at scheduling and we look at the ebbs and flow of traffic based on game days and events, you know, we, we do what we can in studying our routes and how we can decrease our routes being impacted by those traffic issues. So obviously, we try to not put many of our vehicles on 12 at certain times. We like to go across 12, but not use it as our primary, primary travel path. So we're looking heavily at route modifications and how we can decrease turns, et cetera. Increase customer service. Last year, we mentioned Double Map, which is our new route track, our bus tracking software. We now are fully implemented with that, our passenger counting system. We now have automatic voice enunciation systems on the bus. So when you approach a stop, you break a geofence and it announces to the passengers on the bus that you're approaching the stop. And there's other customer service aspects of that program that we are exploring with digital kiosks and displays at shelters, et cetera. Maintenance, maintenance, maintenance. Ronnie and I are looking at our capital replacement plan as we speak. We have buses that now have high mileage and as you, you roll those buses and you do the things you do on diesel vehicles, maintenance becomes of utmost importance. So we are working hard on increasing our maintenance process on all our buses. And this year, we are procuring new heavy-duty low-floor buses. So the buses that we've had, our biggest buses that we put on campus are not heavy-duty buses. They're bought through state contract and they work in certain areas, but we now have gone through the contract program, actually through the City of Oxford and the, and the transit program in Oxford, to be able to procure low-floor, heavy-duty buses that are used on heavy-duty transit facilities in New York and Washington, et cetera. So they have a, not necessarily a higher capacity, but a much more heavy-duty process of maintenance and being able to handle, to handle loads. Real quickly, touch about some changes that we have this year. Overall, we aren't modifying routes significantly. There's five areas I want to highlight. One is Reed Place. Currently, we've been going in Reed Place and kind of circumventing the roads and coming back out. We are working with them to actively see how we can improve the entry and exit and drop-off location at Reed Place. The second, and this is in response to the pair transit program, is that one of our biggest destinations on our pair transit system is Fresenius Kidney Care on Udora Wealthy off Stark Road. And so we now have worked through the discussions with Fresenius to add a fixed route stop at Fresenius so that individuals who are independent and wish they can get on one of our fixed route systems and ride to the kidney facility and, and receive dialysis. The other three are in direct response to projects I know y'all have been involved with. The College View Project, which is the large public-private partnership that will be constructed on College View Street. We will introduce a shelter and a stop location there. The other is Locksley Way, which is the, the TAP program that y'all with the county and the university have all worked together to install and will have installed two different shelters on Locksley Way around the Veranda area. And then the other two that, that I'm really excited about are the two new shelter installations on Lewisell Street as part of the Safe Routes to School Grant that will connect Lynn Lane to Emerson. Those are residential areas that we cannot currently serve because of the dimension of the road and the speed of the road. And so that will give us safe locations to get off the road, pick up and carry and move on. So we're excited about all those additions and those are, from what we understand, all coming to fruition this year. Touch quickly on Double Map. This is Double Map, our online bus tracking system. Every one of those, those icons you see are active buses on our route. So whether you're on your computer such as this, you can log into smart.doublemap.com and you can see the live bus tracking. You can also download the app on your smartphone and you can watch the buses, actually bus icons, and you can watch it track on your icon to see when the bus will be where you are. Or if you do not have a smartphone, we also have options. Every shelter and every location has a sign that has a number that you can text with the bus stop number to it and it will text you back via SMX Text, the ETA of that bus to that location. So each of those are available so that you can know where the bus is at any given time. So our proposed budget for this next year, we are proposing, and this is a fiscal year budget, I mean a federal fiscal year budget, so this is October of this year through September of next year, a little over $4 million in total operational cost. Cost share works out to about 1.7 in total cost share needs. 1.4 million of that is from Mississippi State and that comes through parking and transit services revenue. $170,000 of that is in various contracts and advertising that we have in place with private developments, et cetera, where we offer transit services. You, the city, have offered $50,000 and we appreciate that. We also are going to the county for the first time in February, or February 18th actually on their, on their recess meeting to request $50,000 specifically to a pair transit program that will grow out into the county because we, we get quite a few calls from those in the county that we cannot serve because they're outside of our service area. So we're working with the county on that. So just to offer you a comparison of where that is from a funding standpoint, Tupelo now has a fixed route system that's funded by the city. Oxford is a 50/50 split with the city camp- is a 50-50 split with the city campus. Jackson is funded by the city. Coast Transit is a combination of funding from city-county. Hub City and Hattiesburg is the same with, with city funding. And then we work out to about 82% from MSU, 3% then from the city, and what we hope to be 3% from the county. So, we appreciate that, and we will continue to, to ask for your support on that. So, I do want to thank you. We very much appreciate the, the new support that you have given us this year. We appreciate all the support that you have. I enjoy working with your city engineer quite often. We enjoy working with each other and giving each other a hard time, too. So I appreciate that, and I'd be glad to answer any questions, both from you and then from the audience as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dumas. And, and may I say that the SMART system is, is just been a wonderful asset to the community. I think it has been, has made a huge difference in our ability to attract businesses and to allow our residents to participate in multiple ways that they have not been able to before. So I'm very, very pleased and proud that it is a partnership, albeit heavier on your side than ours, but it is a partnership that obviously will be growing. So I think it's wonderful. Board, anyone wish to make any comments? Alvin Miller?
I, I got thinking about this during the presentation and really in the comparables to other municipalities that are similar in size to the city of Starkville. Really the only one that you showed was Oxford, probably in size. And so, you know, there, there are a lot of cities throughout the state of Mississippi that are similar in, you know, size, and, and throughout the state. And for us to have this as an asset in our city is just such a compliment to our citizens and, and such a benefit and an asset. And I know both from being on campus and then also in this role at the city, it's a lot of work to do what y'all do, and I only hear good things about y'all's department. And so I just want to make sure that you know that, and I know that it's a lot, a lot of hard work. I know, I know y'all don't hear it sometimes, but, but I really do in
Might be the first time this year.
Well, in the overall scheme of things, I will say that, maybe not from students getting tickets, but, you know, in the bigger picture, I really do hear positive things about y'all's department. And, and I personally think that y'all do a great job. And I too echo the mayor and appreciate the partnership that we have. Anyway, we can support y'all, just let us know. I appreciate that.
So, you want to open it as a public hearing?
What is?
I'm sorry. Well, I looked down there a minute.
I went as fast as I could.
She's wagging her finger. You better pay attention.
I wanted, I wanted to say that it's terrific to have the transit system. The parat, paratransit system really gives us something that we, we just didn't have access to. And it gives people who need that particular service an ability to have an independence that they might not otherwise have. So I think for, for those most vulnerable in our community, y'all are providing a tremendous service in, in allowing them to be independent and mobile and, and live their life without having to depend on the kindness of others always.
Thank you.
Alvin Walker?
Just want to say that I've been fortunate to be here since the inception of this program, and I am pleased to say and continue to see that it continues to get better and better every year. The increasing in ridership is great, but what I, what I see is an increasing in the level of service that's being provided on the bus. Constantly trying to evaluate, how do we make the routes better? How do we make improvements even though they may be slight? I would say that, kudos to you, knowing that you had some training in what this might be, but this was a little bit of a, a new animal. And for a community our size, time's going to take a little bit longer to, to get there because the routes are going to be a little bit longer. But I think it's no question that it has been a, a big feather in, in the city's hat, and is only going to continue to get better. And so keep doing what you're doing, keep making sure we get that grant funded, so we can continue to make the SMART system even, even stronger for our community and for the folks on campus. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Public hearing. Do you want to hold up a public hearing? You want me to hold it? Do we hold, do we hold a public hearing?
You can hold it and that'll be fine. I'm gonna sit down and take notes.
All right, there you go. All right. This is an opportunity for anyone to speak to the SMART bus system. This is a public hearing for y'all to provide us input, provide Mr. Dumas' input on, on the SMART system. So now is an opportunity, if you would, come forward, state your name and what ward you're in. Mr. Turner?
Good evening, good evening to the mayor and board. My name's Abington Ward Seven. SMART buses have been good to me. I ride, I ride it six days a week. We have some problems though. Like I said, about the scooters and stuff, we have had some incident where they are dying trying to bust and we had to jam on the brakes to keep them hitting them. Then they got dog curled clothes on. Now, we appreciate if they could wear light colored clothes before that the driver can see. Because, we have older drivers, then we have younger drivers. And then also with the ladies, I'm on the bus with them, that they will have a little extra because you have people that are like, try to take advantage of people. And it's not good. We had an incident a couple of weeks ago where one of the female drivers was threatened by someone that didn't have nothing to lose. But then once the police got there, he was gone. But the, the young drivers need to, are kind of be helped on when we go cold red. If that mean you're going to jail. And they need to kind of know where to go cold red, you know, if they ask you, try to be nice, and you want to be bad, and we get go cold red and take care. We're trying to be a help to people, but some people try to be bad or feel like that. They can do whatever they want to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Thank you.
Bill Chapman from University of States. And my wife and I frequently have short-term international visitors that stay with us. And we're right on the route from Old Main East League to the retreat. And want to know why it stops at the retreat rather than going on down to the golf course community, and why it does not stop at Chadwick or Canterbury, which are also sources of lots of students who, who walk up Old Mayhew, which is not the safest road to be on, which needs a curbing right, right about.
Well, and, and that is why we don't stop on Old Mayhew. So we stop at the retreat because they are a paid contract. So they are the terminus of the route. They, they actually help fund that route.
And they are gated.
That is correct.
Which means that my students can't really get in and use them as the terminus.
Right.
So they have to actually walk to school.
So they, they pay for that stop and then Old Mayhew, we've evaluated Canterbury. We cannot get a bus into Canterbury, and the dimensions of Can, of that road, Old Mayhew, we, we can't stop, there's nowhere we can stop and safely pick up our, our deposit. Now, we added the stop at the Church of Christ because there was enough room on the apron and actually some hatched-out parking there to where we could, we could add a stop. So we specifically stopped there because the dimensions of the road allowed us to be able to safely enter and exit the vehicle the way that we should. And unfortunately, there's really nowhere else on that, on that route where we can stop at this point without some type of improvements on the roadway.
And that roadway is owned by the county and not the city, I guess?
That's correct.
Canterbury was in the city and we were not. But Canterbury's not.
That's right.
So there's nothing this body can do. Thank you.
Until they end it.
Anyone, anyone else wishing to speak in a public hearing about the, Ms. Isaac, do I see you coming forward?
Yes, ma'am. She's gonna speak. Yeah, I can't push this tonight. Thank y'all. Once again, I'm coming to y'all. You know, I've been up here talking about the trash, you know, talking about how we travel and how we do and what we do. And living on the hill, we have no sidewalk. But they are kind about coming and getting me, picking me up and taking me now, but we need some help because they don't have funding like they should have funded. And they had to take in the compensation. So that pushed back a lot of change. You know, they pushed back. I'm, I'm not saying y'all can get five thousand more dollars. That's what Jerem told me to tell y'all. But I didn't tell y'all. But anyway, if we can figure, you know, a way, because it's very important. I believe to go sometime to the doctor and I have to get, you know, a taxi cab, which is not nobody's fault but mine. But he has improved the service. I'm gonna tell you just a little bit now. I ain't gonna brag on too much. You know, I love him, but I ain't gonna brag on too much. But he has, and thanks to the mayor, she gave me your number. I'll tell you, I definitely can inform with your numbers. But I would like to thank you for providing that service for me because sometime I have to get out of my chair and get in a taxi cab, and I can just take my chair and go with the transit. And they have been very good. I just wanted to say that because they have, not you, but you.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that.
They have, but I thank y'all for that.
Thank you, Ms. Isaac.
I'd like that word, "kind" in the city minutes, please. That's the first time she's ever said that.
We'll make sure, we'll make sure this, this. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Thank y'all. I appreciate it.
I would just like to make one comment.
Yes, sir. Would you say your name for the record?
Well, maybe two comments. First, I think the, the SMART system is-
Would you, would you say your name for the record?
Oh, sorry. Jim Crispin.
Thank you, sir.
University of States. I think the SMART system is very good, and I'm not disputing the difficulty in stopping on Old Mayhew, but I would like to point out that that hasn't stopped the school bus from stopping on that street, I guess, every day. So that might be something to consider. If it's so dangerous, then maybe there's something there. I don't know, you guys probably don't have anything to do with that because it's county, but if they can stop, there might be some way that the SMART system could stop, too.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Just one point on that. Per our funding, we're required for every route to have an ADA accessible vehicle on it. So our buses have wheelchair lifts, and so the, the determining factor really is if we stop and we had to require a lift, which we have to have, can we deploy that lift and pick up in a safe location? So, yeah, we've been asked multiple times, well, the school bus stops here, but, and we can, we can pull up and well-bodied individuals can get on and off, but if, if by chance that someone was not, which we're required to have the facility for them, we couldn't safely put them, we couldn't safely either enter or exit them from the bus.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Thank you. I will close it as a public hearing?
Thank y'all.
Is that it?
We're good. Thank y'all.
We've met the requirement?
You have met the requirement.
All right. Thank you, sir. We appreciate y'all being here. We do truly appreciate what y'all do.
Thank y'all.
All right. Thank you. All right. Our next public appearance is an introduction and presentation by Ms. Starkville, 2019, Michaela Poindexter. Ms. Poindexter, congratulations on your crowning.
Thank you.
And your crown.
Good evening. So I've been competing in the Miss America organization for two years now. And in those two years, I've found that when I talk to people about the Miss America organization, they're often shocked to find out that it's not a beauty pageant. Instead, it is the leading provider of scholarships for young women in the United States. It is also, it also encourages their contestants to become involved in their community and help to serve their community. In fact, Miss America lends 0% of its scoring to how a contestant looks. Instead, contestants are scored on talent, interview, and knowledge of their personal platform. This past year, Miss Mississippi gave away $200,000 in scholarships. Each contestant takes home $1,300 just for competing. However, additional scholarships can be awarded based on things such as having the highest GPA and having the most community service hours. This inspires each individual to be the best well-rounded contestant possible. Each year, contestants choose a platform. These platforms are often extremely personal. In fact, 71% of this year's Miss Mississippi contestants chose their platform because it was something that affected them personally. My platform is Helping Hands. It increases access to services for underprivileged and special needs kids. This has given me the opportunity to increase awareness of the needs of the kids in our own community. I currently teach a special needs dance class, as well as collect school supplies and books for kids who cannot afford them. I'm also working with another Miss Mississippi contestant to create safe places and businesses across the state of Mississippi. These businesses will provide immediate help and, and safety to youth and teens until proper help can arrive. My goal as a Miss Mississippi contestant and a Starkville citizen is to make the greatest impact possible on my community. And I think I speak for all the Miss Mississippi contestants when I say that our purpose for competing is not to gain recognition or praise, but is in, but it is to instead be role models and encourage people to push past their greatest boundaries so that they can achieve anything they set their minds to. Being Miss Starkville has already given me such a great opportunity to represent and serve this community. I look forward to being the best representative possible for Starkville this summer at Miss Mississippi. And at this moment, I would like to ask y'all if y'all have any questions for me.
Anyone have any questions? Anyone on the board have any questions? No questions?
No questions.
You scared. Congratulations, yes, and good luck.
Thank you.
Absolutely. When is, when is the contest? When is the-
June 15th through the 23rd.
June 15th through the 23rd. Okay.
Good luck.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming. All right. That completes our public appearance. We now have a public hearing. This is a public hearing in consideration of conditional use 19-01, a request for conditional use to allow for two dwellings, a single-family detached on two proposed lots at 104 Azalea Lane in a C1 zone, parcel number 102000029. And Mr. Havlin, Ms. Corbin?
CU 19-01 is for 104 Azalea Lane. This is a conditional use request by Starkville Habitat for Humanity to allow for two single-family detached dwellings on two proposed lots at 104 Azalea Lane. The applicant has proposed a subdivision of existing lot into three. The two northern lots are being proposed, a single-family detached house to be constructed by Habitat for Humanity. The proposed zoning, or the property's current zoning is C1, which in order to construct a single fa, a dwelling, single-family detached, a conditional use is required for the city of Starkville's permitted conditional use charge. Fifteen property owners of record at the 300 feet of the subject property were notified directly by mail of the request. A public hearing was noticed in the Starkville Daily News on January 21st, 2019, and a sign was posted on the property concurrent with the publication of the notice. As of this date, the planning office has received one phone call requesting information. Appendix A, Article 6, Section 1 of City Code of Starkville provides five specific criteria for conditional use approval. Land use compatibility, the proposed use of dwelling, single-family detached could be considered a compatible use with the adjacent properties. Sufficient site size and adequate site specifications to accommodate the proposed use. The site is adequately sized to accommodate the proposed use. Proper use of mitigative techniques, none proposed. Hazardous waste, no hazardous waste. Compliant with applicable laws and ordinances. The applicant is responsible for obtaining all proper permitting from the city and the state. On January 8th, 2019, the Planning Zoning Commission voted 5 to 1 to recommend approval with one condition, that the applicant shall have six months from time of conditional use approval to obtain a building permit. And this request is also part of the other item we heard next, the preliminary and final plat for the lot.
Okay. Thank you. And is the applicant here? Good evening. Do you have any presentation or anything you'd like to, to say to the board?
No, I think Daniel's done a good job there and it's pretty self, self-evident what we're trying to do with that piece of property. The neighborhood is just a wonderful little neighborhood. It's almost seems rural, but yet it's in the city limits and has access to the SMART buses and whatnot. So we would really like to have some of our homeowners live there.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much. I see. The board, anyone have any? Alvin Walker?
Not so much question for you, but for Daniel at this point to, to make sure that I'm, I'm clear here. First of all, I think locating in this, in this spot for access to the SMART bus is very, very smart. So kudos for that. And you mentioned that one of the criteria was sufficient size. What is the square footage of, of these two lots? Approximately, as being subdivided, I just couldn't, I think it's not what it used to be.
98, 9,850 square feet.
So pushing that 10,000 square foot?
Correct. It's real similar size to the adjacent.
Yeah, so similar size, so that would fall in, being- Yeah, so similar size, so that would fall in being compatible with what other land uses and some of our R...
Yeah, it would almost be a C1, I mean a R1.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Any questions? Either Mr. Havlin or the applicant? Okay. All right. If you will mind, I'm gonna, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, hold on.
And the neighboring zonings or the zonings near it are residential?
Yes, they're residential, but they're actually R5.
They're R5, so they're...
But they're more of a R1 style neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you.
This is one of my favorite streets in my ward. I like Azalea Lane a lot and I think it will be a terrific site for your houses. The people that I've talked to who live there are very supportive of the project and the housing that's proposed fits very nicely with what's there.
Anyone else? Okay. I will now open it as a public hearing. If anyone wishes to speak regarding this matter, you have an opportunity to speak either in favor or against this particular zoning, or I'm sorry, this particular conditional use. Anyone wishing to speak to this matter? Okay. Seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing. Anything further from, from the board? Any questions of Mr. Havlin? Okay. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Ready for the next item?
Oh.
Yep. Go ahead.
Well, we had, the next one is following this. You're talking about that one?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm just gonna take that one up after we do consideration of this one.
Yep. So we're ready?
Move approval.
Okay. You're confusing me. I have a motion for approval of the conditional use of nineteen oh one to allow for two dwellings.
Correct.
Okay. All right. I have a motion from Alvin Miller. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alvin Walker.
May I be recognized?
Yes, you may.
Mr. Miller, is your motion based on the, this project appealing and meeting the five factor test presented by city staff?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. My vote of six oh, motion carries. Next item is item eleven B two A, which is somewhat of a companion piece to this, which I believe is what you were referring to, Alvin Walker. Is that correct? It's consideration of preliminary plat nineteen oh one for, and final plat nineteen oh one, a request for preliminary and final plat approval for subdividing point nine-nine acres into three lots, 104 Azalea Lane and a C1 zoning district.
This proposed subdivision is named Habitat for Humanity Property Azalea Lane, subdivision number two. The subject property is located in C1 zone and we're, where it's at now, the northeast corner of Azalea Lane and Louisville Street. And you can see on the plat, the apparent lot is apparently, I believe it's a fish restaurant at the bottom of it, and so the two new proposed lots are the ones that are being carved out on the north side of it. The subdivision is part of development plan to construct these two single-family residence on Lot One and T. All easements have been provided for in a final plat. There is no proposed roadway dedications on the plat. Electrical service is provided by Starkville Utilities. Potable water and sanitary sewer utility service is provided by the city. On January eighth, 2019, the Planning Zoning Commission voted six to, six to zero to recommend approval with three conditions, and those three conditions are up on the screen.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, move approval.
Alvin Walker, I have a motion for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alvin Sistrunk. Discussion? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Thank you very much. All right. Next item up is the public hearing in consideration of conditional use nineteen dash zero two, a request for conditional use by TEP Starkville LLC to allow residential dwelling units to be placed in a C2 zone as part of a mixed-use development located approximately three hundred and sixty feet southeast of the center of the intersection of Highway twelve east and Pat Station Road directly east of La Quinta Inn. Mr. Havlin?
Yes. This proposal is to construct residential units on the upper floors of a commercial space. It's on the, in commercial space of the ground floor of the proposed building. This is the master plan for the property. There's basically two properties. The property that's not colored in is, was rezoned recently to R5 to allow for residential. And then the property that's highlighted there is C2. And as part of this development, the large orange building that's illustrated up there is what they're proposing to put mixed use in. Our current code does not allow mixed use by rights, so that's what's generating the conditional use request. The property is C2. To construct a dwelling multifamily, conditional use is required per the City of Starkville's permitted conditional use chart. A property owner is of record with three hundred feet of the center of property were notified directly by mail. A public hearing was published in Starkville Daily News on January twenty-first, 2019, and a sign was posted on the property concurrent with the publication of the notice. As of this date, the planning office has received no phone calls about the conditional use request. Appendix A, Article Six, Section One of City Code of Ordinance provides five specific criteria for conditional use review and approval. Land use compatibility. The proposed use of dwelling multifamily could be considered a compatible use with the adjacent properties. The property is currently zoned C2. The 2016 comprehensive plan has area place type listed as suburban center, which does allow for multifamily. Sufficient site size and adequate site specifications to accommodate the proposed use. The site is adequately sized to accommodate the proposed use. Proper use of mitigative techniques, none proposed. Hazardous waste, no hazardous waste. Compliance with applicable laws and ordinance. The applicant is responsible for obtaining the proper permit required by the city state and will be required to seek a certificate of occupancy prior to the commencement of operations at the site. On January eighth, 2019, the Planning Zoning Commission voted six to zero to recommend approval with three conditions. The conditions are in your packet. I didn't have a slide for them. Would you like me to read them or...
Please.
Yes, please, sir.
Condition number one, the applicant shall have six months from the time of conditional use approval to obtain site plan approval from the city's development review committee. Condition number two, the applicant shall obtain a certificate of occupancy prior to the commencement of any business activities on the subject property. Condition number three, all the above conditions shall be fully and faithfully executed or the conditional use shall become null and void.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Havlin. Anything for Mr. Havlin before I ask the applicant? Okay. Is applicant with us?
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Good afternoon.
John Granberry with McCarty Granberry Engineering, representing TEP Starkville.
Welcome, Mr. Granberry. Do you have anything you'd like to add to Mr. Havlin's?
I do not. I think Daniel covered it very well.
Okay. Anyone have any questions, Mr. Granberry?
I just have a question for...
Alvin Walker?
Maybe this is for city staff. Just to refresh my memory, so the road, what looks like a road to the east of what is highlighted, is that a proposed city street?
Yes. This connection goes all the way to the property line. There's another property, then you have a Pat Station Road.
Okay. So that will be the primary ingress egress from north-south through there, not so that what looks like parking right there will...
Yeah. This is road. It has on-street parking that comes through here. If this ever opens up access, they understand that this will be redone...
Gotcha.
...to create a street that goes on the road.
And so the only question that I have, so then the parking, so that part what we just talked about will be city property, city road. The area that's just to the north and to the west, what clearly looks like parking lot, I'm assuming that is going to be parking lot that would be privately maintained by that. The only question I have is if we're going to allow mixed use in this location, which I'm totally for, is we have what is going to be a city street and then we have a parking lot. In which direction do we anticipate that the mixed use on the first floor, I think certainly needs to have a front to the city street and not have the back of the building going to face the city street? And so can you, can you speak to that?
I believe that is the intent, is to have the front storefront. I believe they've got storefront right now all the way around the building.
Okay.
It's got an interior corridor which individuals would enter into and then access, you know, the individual stores from inside the middle corridor and then, of course, you have two residential units on the third floor. So that's what, that's what the layout is right now.
Very good. And this, so this may be a question for the city attorney and Mr. Havlin. I am very much in favor of approving this conditional use tonight. I would like to see that whether it's at the design review committee or whether or not we would need to add a condition that the frontage that faces the building that faces the city street certainly needs to have, be accessible and look like a commercial building that faces the city street and so it doesn't look like the back end of a building. Is that something that needs to be a condition here or can that be handled through the design review?
If you want it to have the force of law, I would recommend it be a condition here.
So let's see. I would, Mayor, I would move approval.
Well, we still need to have a public hearing.
Well, that'll give me time to try to write this out. All right. Thanks. I don't have any questions.
Anything else from the board before I open it as a public hearing? Okay. I'll open it as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this particular agenda item now would be the opportunity. Anyone wishing to speak? Okay. Seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing. Did that give you enough time?
No.
You want to take a sec? You want to make a motion?
Can we take two minutes, please?
Sure. We'll recess for five. How about that? Five minutes? We'll be back at about this clock, about five minutes to seven. So, thank you all. Five to seven, and we will reconvene the meeting. Alden Walker, I believe, has worked up his language that he wanted for the motion. So.
For red and mayor.
Alden Walker, this is yours.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for approval of the conditional use in adding the condition number four, that the facade of the building that faces the city street shall contain storefronts that are accessible from the street.
Second.
All right. And a second from Alden Miller. Any further discussion or any question about that additional element to the motion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you. Thank you so much. All right, next we go into mayor's business, which is, A, is consideration of extension of the contract with retail strategies in the purpose of economic development of retail growth in the city of Starkville. These gentlemen are here to make a presentation, and while we were in recess, they provided letters, reference letters, at each one of everyone's places, I believe. So, if you would like, y'all are welcome to come up. Do you think you have a PowerPoint? Is that correct?
Well, I see the agenda tonight, so we'll try to make it short and sweet.
Okay, we appreciate that.
Look forward to seeing everybody again tonight. Thank you for your time. I know I've met with most of you individually. I'm Scott Von Cannon with Retail Strategies. This is William Turnley. We have John Ruzick and John Jackson. Three years ago, we entered into partnership with the city of Starkville and the Development Partnership, and really means to attract retail and market this community, this area, on a national scale to retailers and development throughout Starkville. So, wanted to very briefly kind of recap our efforts. I know we were here late last year and kind of gave a quick recap, so again, want to keep it short, but just very briefly, you know, why cities like Starkville really come to us and inquire about our help is, you know, boosting tax revenue, job creation, quality of life, and bringing new business, probably desired business to your community. A lot of the value that we bring to Starkville and other communities are resources, time, connections, and experience. We grew out of a retail development brokerage firm many, many years ago when we created this consulting firm. So, we entered this industry with relationships and contacts within the retail real estate industry. So, that really allows us to hit the ground running. Three years ago, again, we entered into a partnership. The city's total investment over that three-year period was $50,000. Again, we're asking for a renewal of our contract, which would be at a rate of $15,000 annually to the city. You can see, we really boast the depth of our team. We have a very deep team, which we'll all talk about here momentarily. We attend a lot of conferences on your behalf. We identified over 100 retailers back in December of 2015. I'm sure we've contacted probably close to 200 at this point. We've had many successes to date, which we'll recap as well. So, you can see, a few of us really serving as the primary points of contact at that time. We were working closely with Mayor Wiseman, now with Mayor Spruill, and Scott Maynard at the Development Partnership, now Jennifer Prather. So, working very closely with those two as our main points of contact in order to really translate information and activity that we're working on as well. We have an entire research team that runs thousands of reports and analytics, so we can analyze this market and really help retailers and developers analyze this market as well. We have a marketing staff that creates marketing materials, puts together site plans that we can use to, again, promote the community as a whole and specific sites as well. We have access and use all kinds of analytics. As I mentioned, Tetrad is actually an international firm that we have an exclusive partnership with, which gives us access to a lot of this information. We were met with the Development Partnership earlier today, and I wanted to be clear that we want this information ready and available to as many people as possible. It's almost scary, the kind of data that we can pull up in markets. Some of it's very useful to us to help convince a retailer or business owner to choose this market. I think I mentioned last time we were here, Starkville is competing with communities all across the country, not just in Mississippi. So, sometimes we have to drill pretty deep within some of these decision-makers. But again, just kind of an ROI from a standpoint of what we bring, from our background, our connections, the type of marketing that we conduct on behalf of this community as well. Some of the success, some of the retail brands that we have helped bring to this market, you're looking at about $38 million annually in tax revenue. What does that bring to the city? About $460,000, give or take, and 270 jobs projected for some of those brands. We've helped different brands on there in different ways, but we've been involved in pretty much each one of those brands on the screen. So, I mentioned, we've represented this community in many trade shows. As a company, we typically attend 15 to 20 national and regional conferences throughout the year. ICSC Recon's kind of the Super Bowl. You've probably heard of the big show in Vegas, about 40,000 attendees. We typically have a very large presence. We've marketed and represented Starkville three years at that show. The Southeastern Show is conducted in Atlanta. We have also represented Starkville three years there as well. Gulf South ICSC, which is more a regional show, really good for South Mississippi, South Alabama, and the Gulf Coast area. Carolina's ICSC show, actually, we're going to here in about five weeks, which is, again, more of a regional Southeastern show. So, just wanted to note those four specifically, really closer to home base here. We do create reports that we provide to our main point of contact following these shows, really detailing who we met with, what their response is to this market, the good, bad, and ugly. If they don't want to be here, why they don't want to be here, or what the barriers of entry are, so we can work on that as well. So, that's just, I think that was actually about a 14-page report. Those are just two very generic front pages there as well. Have a lot of irons in the fire at the moment. We're seeing a big interest in the downtown area. A goal that we've tried to work on over the last few years is really spreading out where the retail is located. We can't always control those factors, obviously, but Highway 12 tends to be naturally where a lot of the nationals currently are located and continues to be where a lot of them continue to want to be. But we're able to bring a few of those retailers outside of that corridor, and hopefully that really expedites additional interest outside of the Highway 12. There is also interest in the downtown area. During our meeting this morning, we were asked by one of the board members, what's something you kind of really learned about the market over the past three years, or might have had a, you know, a concept of what you thought of Starkville and maybe where, you know, something you learned? We started talking about downtown, and about two and a half years ago, we actually had a development group take a look at a mixed-use project in really the downtown core, with assumptions that there's a lot of the Mississippi State students consistently coming to downtown. And that was something we learned, that we feel like we need to do what we can to drive more students to the downtown area, and bringing in certain restaurants and bringing in certain retail business can certainly help that as well. So, again, very generic names there, obviously, but we have a lot of businesses that actively want to be here, that we're currently working with, trying to get them into this market. I know we met in the late fall, I think in October, but since that time, we've also added about 24 new retail and restaurant names to our list that we've engaged in the last several months since we last met with you guys. We've also attended a number of ICSC shows. As I mentioned, there has been a heightened interest really in the downtown area. Some really good properties have opened up as well. That always helps us when good sites open up. And again, we met again with the mayor and Jennifer in November as well, just to give really an update of things going on. So, again, looking at your original investment, as an investor, you're looking for ROI, obviously. There's a lot of ways we can measure that, as far as new business comes to the market. Obviously, a very easy way that a lot of cities do that is in the form of sales tax revenue, so that kind of gives you an idea of an annual sales tax collection of a number of businesses. And then if you, you know, obviously multiply that over a three-year period, that's what you're looking at, as far as, you know, we've been here for a three-year period. Again, what we're proposing is continuation of our partnership of our services. We'll be looking at updating our recruitment plan, which was created in year one. Obviously, we've updated our analytics and all the research on an annual basis, but that will be probably the first thing we'll do coming out the gate. We're talking about areas of focus. Obviously, downtown is a continued area. I know there's a referendum for a potential sports complex on the corner of 25 and 12, assuming that occurs. That would probably open up additional opportunities in that corridor of town, even seeing the proposed mixed-use multifamily project on the north side of 12. Think we, you know, want to continue to try to push additional growth and development in that direction as well. We're here to answer any questions, and thank you for your partnership. Thank you for your business. So, we did leave three letters of recommendation out, as requested by the mayor, and one's a broker in town, one's a owner of a shopping center, and another one is a leasing agent as well. So, here for any questions or comments as well.
Thank you so much, Scott. Does anyone have any questions?
Mayor. Alden Little. Appreciate the presentation, Scott. You guys do a very good job. I know it's not something that we're out able to talk about firsthand. I know you talk to your points of contact regularly, but as a board, we don't hear it regularly, and citizens don't, and obviously, for reasons, privacy reasons, we can't be privy to everything that's going on or blow a deal potentially.
Sure.
So, but I appreciate what you do, and for the amount of money that we're spending, we could not send, hire an individual to do it and attend all these shows and promote the city like you guys are, and cheerleaders for us on our behalf. So, with that, Mayor, I'm moving forward in recommendations.
Okay, I have a motion from Alden Little. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alden Carver, second from Alden Carver. Further discussion?
I do, I was going to say the same thing. I always look for a turn on investments, so I enjoy that slide. You got some pretty weighted letters that they all had turned in from developers in town and business owners, and personally spoke to a couple of them, but, you know, I think one of the things I have to ask in the near future, when the time is right, from a quality of life standpoint, is maybe entertainment issues. You know, this is a college town. This is a very young town in census between the high school population and the college. But, you know, that's one of the things I often get, is when are we going to get more activities that are physical in nature? So, I know you kind of spoke to some of that, and some of that's coming in the future, I think, but thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Anyone else? No more discussion? All right, well, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. We appreciate y'all coming and making presentations to us. We'll look forward to more successes. Thank you. All right, we had removed item C from consent, which is discussion in consideration of the adoption of a job description advertising for position of municipal judge pro temp in accordance with state statute 2123-9. Vice Mayor, you were asking for it to be removed.
Mayor, I move approval of this authorization to advertise for municipal court judge pro temp in accordance with section 21-23-9 as a contract worker at $53.85 per hour. In return, I want to add without benefits.
Yes, ma'am.
That's the motion.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Alden Perkins. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alden Sistrunk. And I did see your hand, Alden Little. Alden Miller, I'm sorry.
He beat me to it.
Okay. All right. So, no further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Item D is consideration of increasing the monthly sanitation residential rate by $1.50 to $16.75, and the commercial sanitation rate by $5 monthly. And this is one of those difficult times for us. What we have pending that is necessitating this increase, in my opinion, is the fact that we have a landfill that needs, must be addressed. MDEQ has given us some time to mitigate our landfill and to bring it back into compliance, and it is a fairly expensive project to the tune of about one and a half million, according to our engineer with Neil Schaefer, John Cunningham, who has estimated it. And currently, that is an estimate, but I think it's probably a very sophisticated estimate. Obviously, we will wait until it goes out for bid, but we are in need of making progress. We have purchased the two pieces of property. We have closed on that, and so we are now the owners of the areas that were encroached upon, so we have solved that problem, and that allows MDEQ to feel some comfort level that we are moving forward in making progress. But we need to make further progress, which is going to require engineering work and then construction work to bring those areas into conformance. So, knowing that this is an expensive project, and that this is one of those things that we don't have an option on, we can't just do nothing because the dire consequences of that are such that, you know, we would be fined, and we want to be in compliance with MDEQ's regulations. So, that was what precipitated this. We have not had an increase in residential rates since 2013, so that's going on six years. We've not had an increase in commercial rates since 2012, so that's going on seven years. Obviously, we have, you know, normal operational increases as well, but that really is not the crux of why we're addressing this at this point in time. So, with that background, Alden Sistrunk, I see your hand.
Yes, I'd like to say that the city of Starkville, at one point in time, actually operated a sanitary landfill, like the regional waste management service currently in place. In 1994, they got out of that business, but continued to be in the rubbish business, and we still hold our permit for that area. Because of that permit, we have responsibilities. This is an area that's become much more scrutinized, and the regulatory authorities are expecting us to meet responsibilities that have maybe not been as much of a focus over the last 25 years as they should have been. The rate increases are to cover the operations these last bit of time, and the closure ultimately, or potentially, I should, potential closure of the landfill. We are fortunate that we probably will not have to bond this out. We're talking about using an inter-fund borrowing from a couple of other funds in the city and repay that over as short a period of time. That's driven the rate amounts that the mayor has discussed, and will generate about $300,000 a year. So, we are looking at a payback period of, depending on what the final cost of all of this is, six to seven years of being able to pay back our other funds for the monies that they're going to loan the landfill. I had the question, is this something that we can avoid? And the answer is no. As long as we hold the permit, we have the responsibility for doing the things that are going to be covered through all this. I also was asked, what sort of penalties will we incur if we don't do it? And I talked to our consultant today, and he said that if it comes to that, and we never want to come to the point of having to pay penalties, they are authorized to levy up to $25,000 a day in penalties. So, that's the kind of thing that gets your attention when it's time to make a decision like this. We certainly don't want to do that. I would like to move approval of increasing the sanitation department monthly residential fee by $1.50, and the commercial rate by $5 per pickup.
Yes, per week. Per week.
I thought it was a month.
Per month, I'm sorry. Yes, per month. It's on the agenda correctly.
It looks like per pickup, I believe.
Mayor, there's some inconsistency. The motion needs to be clearer.
You're right.
I'm trying to get it clear.
You're right, it does, and the chart was, the chart is up there, but it's $5. If it's $55 for one week, then it'd be $60, so.
Possibly. It's 10.
Yeah.
Okay. So.
It is per pickup.
Okay. So, I move that we approve increasing the sanitation department monthly residential fees by $1.50, and the commercial rate by $5 per pickup effective the 1st of April 2019, that those fees be clearly identified on the bill as landfill fees, and that this rate increase shall apply to any and all costs, fees, and expenses of any kind associated with the city's maintenance, operation, and potential closure of the city's landfill, and shall remain in effect pending subsequent board action until the city closes the landfill and tenders the certificate of operation.
Can you pass that down for the city clerk? Okay, do we need to read that again? Does anybody have that?
Can I ask Mr. Ware one question?
Oh, of course.
Mr. Ware, just for clarification, and I want to be sure, because there's some inconsistency on the, you've done a great job, Mr. Ware, but I want to be clear, for those persons who are paying $25 a month right now, let's say, you know, they're a small business, and under that motion, and I'm not clear, how much would that be increased to? Now, she mentioned 60. Would it be $5 more per month, or a week, or pickup, or how would that?
It'll be clear as $5 per month added to your bill. Now, you're paying like your law firm, you're paying $25, and then it'll be increased by $5.
Or anyone else in any similar location?
Yes.
In the motion to say that, Ms. Sistrunk, is that the intent?
Let me ask a question, and then I may want to revise that motion ever so slightly. So, we have a schedule. We're hearing $5 per month for a small business like Vice Mayor Perkins. Container fees, those would be increased by $5 per pickup?
Yes, ma'am. You see the chart, like, one week pickup for a commercial ride is $55. That will go to $60.
Okay.
Per week. That's for one pickup per week, and then the one ten, I add just $5 more. So, if that goes up, it just goes up to like $60.
Let me do this. Can I amend the rate structure of my motion to say $5 per month for commercial accounts and for container fees by the amounts identified on the closed schedule?
Yeah, I think that's where we fell short. We didn't include that monthly, single monthly rate in the chart, so that was the confusion factor.
Residential fees, $1.50 per month. Commercial, $5 per month, and containers, per the schedule shown in the board.
Is that accurate, Cal? That's what you, that was what you were suggesting? Okay.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second for Alden Walker. All right, further discussion? Alden Carver.
I think you understand. Alden Sistrunk and I spoke about this, but my greatest concern is that the fact, and the city attorney and I spoke, do you think that this addresses my concern that this will end once the landfill is satisfied, once the certificate is complete? And I guess because I've had people say that, once this is placed in effect 20 years from now, it's still carrying on long after we're not on this board, but do you think that satisfies what my need is?
Let's see the other board get that motion on the bottom section. Right now, Alden Carver, the motion says, shall remain in effect pending subsequent board action until the city closes the landfill and tenders the certificate of operation. And so, right now, there are two things that tie it to the landfill. There's the designation on the bill, that the increase goes to the landfill, and there's a language in this motion that it stays in effect unless another board or you guys want to do something else with the rate, until the city tenders that certificate. So, the way I would interpret that is, when the certificate gets tendered, then the rate would go away. But if you guys want to further clarify that, you can certainly write that into the motion. But if you guys want to further clarify that, you can certainly write that into the motion.
Well, it'd be my intent, I would definitely vote for it if it stays that way. Just my intent is to address this landfill specifically, and I think that's what that language says. One thing we do need to talk about, and it's been floated around for years, is two things, I think. I mean, we've talked about garbage bag distribution, and what percentage of that would knock out of this, and also, maybe, we just got on board with the GPS, and maybe removal of GPS, and just some ways to, to look, to save money within that department. I think you do a wonderful job of what you've been given. I do. But those are the only two things I could really highlight that, and the garbage bag distribution, just, you know, if that's something, it's probably too late in this discussion, but those two items, I think we could address down the road and see to help without having a rate increase, so, thank you.
One of the things that, that only concerns me about this is if we close that landfill and, and tender the certificate of operation within the timeframe in which we come into compliance, that's probably going to be maybe 18 months at the most. I don't think we're going to be able to pay that.
Recoup the money.
Yeah.
I don't think that's my intention, if 18 months is complete.
No, 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 I was talking about Alderman Sistrunk's motion.
And, and that's, that language was crafted just before the meeting tonight, so.
The time at which the, the obligation for the closure, financial obligation?
Any cost associated with the landfill. Any cost associated with the landfill are satisfied.
He can modify that while.
Is there any intention to reopen the landfill?
Well, I tell you what, Alderman Vaughn, I would suggest not, because, you know, back when we were in the landfill business, and we're not, we haven't been now for that period of time since we've been out of compliance, you know, since I've been in and I found out we were out of compliance. MDEQ, the regulations are such that it is a much more complex operation than it ever was when we first got into it. I think the regulations have stiffened up dramatically. It requires much more sophisticated knowledge of maintaining one than I think we want to get into, to be perfectly frank. So, we have been using for the last year and a half or more, the landfill out at Golden Triangle Regional Solid Waste Authority, and that's been just fine with us. I think that that is probably the way for us to go, because then we are not, we are not constrained, constrained is not the word I want, we are not in some sort of jeopardy by having to follow those particular strict rules. So, that would be my suggestion, but the, you know, the board certainly can do what the board would like to do, but, you know, from my perspective, I would, I would advise against it based on that, because I think that's a whole level of expertise that we do not currently have.
If the call is greater by using what we use in the landfill?
Actually, Mr. Ware, I, I don't think our budget has, has changed dramatically in using the solid waste authority out of, out in West Point.
No, ma'am, it ain't changed. It's better for us to use that landfill to be in compliance with DQ. It is so complex now that if we get back in the business, and we're going to have to buy all new equipment, because we sold all the old equipment. I mean, it was outdated.
Well, and, and the equipment was very, very old.
Then, then you're going to have to hire somebody that's qualified.
Exactly, exactly. And you've got to hire someone who's got some really good expertise in the construction of the cells, and making sure those cells meet that engineering requirement. So, that is the reason I would say we don't do that. Alderman.
Which really, you could make the argument, that's how we got into the situation we're in now.
That's precisely how we got into the situation we're in now. Anyway, that would be, that would be my recommendation. And we do own that with the county. There is some county participation with us in that, and we're going to need to visit with them on how we go forward. And if they would like to take it over, you know, that may be something they want to do. But it's been ours in terms of operation for the last, I guess, 20 years or so. So, anyway.
And some of these costs are going to be incurred, whether we continue to operate the landfill or not. There's, there's a certain amount of it that, that has nothing to do with ongoing operations. If, if I could amend the last portion of my motion to say, this rate increase shall apply to any and all costs, fees, and other expenses of any kind associated with the city's maintenance, operation, and potential closure of the city's landfill, and shall remain in effect pending subsequent board action until the city closes the landfill and any, and any cost associated with the landfill are satisfied.
And what was changed, and for what measure?
We, we added until the costs are satisfied, so we can.
So, that gets to the one and a half million or the six and seven years?
Yep.
Okay.
And Alderman Walker, is that, that amendment satisfactory to you with your second?
Yes, but can we read it one more time?
Sure.
From the beginning, so that we're all.
I'll let you do that. Thank you.
I think it's a handwriting issue.
From the top, here we go. I move approval of increasing the sanitation department monthly residential fee by $1.50, and the commercial rate by $5 weekly, effective April 1, 2019, and the container fee schedule as shown in the board packet, as shown in the board packet, also effective April 1, 2019. These fees are to be clearly identified on the invoice as landfill fee, and this rate increase shall apply to any and all costs, fees, and other expenses of any kind associated with the city's maintenance, operations, and potential closure of the city's landfill, and shall remain in effect pending subsequent board action until the city closes the landfill and any cash, any cost, the, the city attorney's handwriting is terrible, and any cost associated with the landfill are satisfied.
Okay. Clear? Okay, all right. Passing, passing it on down. All right, so, and your, your second is still good to her motion?
Yes, second.
All right. Further discussion? Further discussion? Alderman Carver? Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Walker. We'll start there, then continue. Alderman Carver?
Just for the record, city attorney, do you see any other option to this alternative?
I do not.
You know, I was going to say publicly, I don't think this is anything this board calls. I don't think there's anything that in particular board calls. I think that oftentimes, shit on the side of the table, you just got to take action that mitigates problems and finds solutions, and this is one I would like to thank Alderman Sistrunk and whoever else worked on these figures to probably keep them to a minimum from a residential side. A $1.50 is sufficient. And then, I think that I would recommend, from a business side, to put that chart maybe in the paper or something to explain to our business owners that it's kind of convoluted the way, you know, you just need to see that chart to make, basically, $5 per pickup if you're a weekly pickup, but that explains a lot. So, maybe we, as a city, could put something in the paper or on our website would be sufficient to explain that to our business owners, so I'm sure we'll get calls. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Walker?
I'd just say, Mr. Ware, and I, I think for everybody, this is, even though it's $1.50 and the $5 a pickup, or $5 for a commercial, that's not something that I take lightly. I think, you know, we all want to try to keep costs down, but at this point, we have, we know that we have a landfill that is not in compliance, and MDEQ is been, we've been trying to address this for the last several years to try to move to get to compliance. And in order, the reality is, in order to get to compliance, it's going to take a fair amount of money to be able to do that. And this is about the only way where funding's going to be allowed, to be able to have a way to do that, and that ultimately could potentially come away at, at some point when this is paid for. And I'm pretty sure that I'm not going to be sitting here when we decide whether or not we're going to sell the landfill or not, but I would, I would absolutely concur with the, the mayor. I think we need to be not in the landfill business. We may decide that we want to keep that landfill and use it for some other purpose, but I would certainly agree that we probably don't need to be in the landfill business. But don't take this $1.50 for all the residential clients lightly. That is another expense that they're going to incur, and they're not going to see the service for that $1.50. They're going to be paying for, for the debt. But the garbage truck's still going to come by your house twice a week, and I think you guys do clearly provide very good service for what we're asking that the community gets for the, now it's going to be the $16.75 that we pay for it, so, thank you.
Thank you. And, and thank you for what you do. Any, any further discussion on this? Any further discussion? All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right, by a vote of six to one, motion carries. All right. And the next item is consideration of authorizing city attorney Chris Flatimer and Slaughter and Associates to draft an annexation ordinance in anticipation of pursuing the annexation of areas A and B, or area A, as directed by the board. And this is something we have been looking at now for almost a year, probably a year fully, and we started with a much wider area, and we have now come down to a fairly manageable, smaller area that we feel to be, that I believe the board is comfortable is, is more manageable, and that makes some sense. Our last annexation was in 1998, and so it has been 20, going on now 21 years since we last annexed. At the time we annexed, we brought in about 10 square miles, which was quite a chunk, considering at the time we were 15 square miles. So, that was a substantial amount of mileage, square miles, that we brought into the city, and I think that part of the difficulty we had was that it was such a large area, and the servicing of that area was, was challenging, to say the least. But I think we are at a point now where we have had a good bit of growth and development to the east, had some to the west, and we're seeing some to the south, but in particular to the east, and that is one of those things that is a consideration in how we decide to annex. Each one of us, I think, probably has, who are either in favor of this or have concerns about it, have their own reasons. I was hoping that we would have an opportunity to have an increase in population that would cause us to, I, I think it's a business model for us that is, if our population is shown to increase at the next census, so that we are clearly the largest population in the Golden Triangle, which I think we are going to be despite that, but I think that, that level of growth matters when it comes to businesses looking at us, and we just contracted with retail strategies for exactly that. And part of what they do, and what they need in order to service us, is to have additional population that is something that they can sell as a density factor for businesses to want to come here, because you obviously have to have rooftops and population in order for people to be able to eat in restaurants like Olive Garden, or whatever restaurants I hear about that people want, like Lobster, Red Lobster, and Olive Garden, and Whataburger, and, you know, any number of, of places that I hear people talk about wanting to, wanting to have in town. You know, why don't we have a mall? Why don't we have things that are infrequent, most frequently population-driven? So, that was one of my areas of interest in that, particularly pushing for it prior to the 2020 census. I know other, other concerns were to have control of our entry points, and 182 and 82 being a particular point where, that's where people think Starkville begins. And so, even though it doesn't, we have no ability to impact the impression as people come into town. So, that's another one of those elements of it. So, I, I think there are just a, a number of things that have caused us to look at this at, at this time. And so, I, I, obviously, this is the first step of positive movement to, to get this done. We've looked at it and studied it, we've looked at different areas, and this would be the first step that would move us down, further down that path. So, there'll be many, many public hearings as we go forward, if the board chooses to do so, which I certainly am in favor of and would like to see happen. So, there will be lots of discussion yet, and not only public hearings, but I hope community hearings, or community meetings. So, at this point in time, I will yield, yield the floor. Alderman Carver, I see your hand first.
Before we get too deep into discussion, I guess tonight, my greatest concern was for the public hearing process. Will there be, will there be public hearings inside this, in our board meetings for the next couple of meetings?
Absolutely, absolutely.
It'll be two?
Because it'll be, at the minimum, two, because that's our policy. But that's, you know, this will be an ordinance adoption, so it'll be two of those. Also, would like to, I know at one point in time, when we first started talking about it, I went out and met with the University Estates Homeowners Association, and I foresee doing some more of that, and being proactive about, about meeting with folks who would be impacted by this, as well as people in the community who would also be impacted, clearly, if this comes into the city. So, Alderman Carver, you still have the floor?
Well, I'm just going to say, I probably support this message tonight. It does no, in no way solidifies my vote for or against it. I'm probably still about a 50/50. I was not a, 100, I was 100% against the original annexation, which had a lot, a lot of agricultural land in the southeast part, and also included Mississippi State University. Mississippi State University opted out, which led into this much narrower corridor up on the northeast corner. I think the biggest blackout we've got as a city is the fact that we're 20-plus years after our last annexation, not done by anyone on this board, but it, the services have not been fully provided. So, I think that was such an enormous annexation at the time, that it probably wasn't feasible to even get those services provided within a 21, 22-year timeframe. This is much, much smaller, much more of a developed area, so these are just talking points, these are some things I like to do as this goes out, that more or less present both sides. I think when you understand this, and Alderman Sistrunk and I spoke today, is you're always going to have people on both sides that are for and against it. And people that live out in the county chose to live there for a reason. It's a quality of life issue for those individuals, if they want to live more in a neighborhood setting, they would choose to live in the city, and, and there's nothing wrong with that. But just, just a note, I guess one of the things that the city that says that individuals, the city could address is blighted areas out there. I know that's, and I've had people say that some blight out in the Clayton Village area, and this is something maybe the city could use as a tool to address, whether it be grass, heights, just simple things. I've received 14 letters or emails against the annexation, and I've received one for. And again, it's just, I think, as a city, and probably one of the biggest hurdles we have as, as a city, is just the fact that there was so much annexation in 1998, that it looks worse. That annexation and this are, are two separate annexations, in my opinion. But, um, so I'm not undecided. I will be voting for this tonight, just for the fact allow, I think as these hit the headlines the next few days, if we'll have more people coming up wanting to speak, both for and against, and to give everybody an opportunity, so.
Okay, Alderman Sistrunk, I see your hand.
I, I would like to say that these, these kinds of things are difficult, where we're trying to balance individual wishes against community needs, and one of our responsibilities is to not just look at how the city functions right now, but how we're going to function over time. And I do think that the '98 annexation gave us quite the black eye, and, and probably prevented us from doing some things that we should have done from then until now, in terms of addressing where we need to be planning, where we expect to see more growth, where, where we would potentially want to annex territory. Do you have any information available, mayor, that would show what we have implemented?
I do. I was going to let a little discussion ensue and then do that, but I can go ahead and do that now if you'd like me to. Okay. Alderman Little, did you?
I would just like to, to weigh in on this process. I think the mayor would concur that I've been very cautious as we went through this study with Slaughter and Associates over the past year. I agree with Alderman Carver that the first proposed study area seemed too large, much too large, and included a very rural area. But a couple of those areas will probably come back up at some point down the road. I'm not sure there'd be some board have to revisit the, the area south on South Montgomery, the residential areas, and cities follow growth. And as you, if you ride down South Montgomery, you can see all the residential neighborhoods popping up, and will continue with the Port House corridor now, but that's open with Hill State Boulevard. So, that's, that's coming, and, you know, we're, we're not going that direction at this point. You've got an area that's established out to our east, it's a gateway corridor area. It's coming in from the east is the first entrance that you see. If you were to take that, that exit, you think you're in Starkville, but you're not. It's, it's all dark out there. That's an area we, we're, the city and county, and the school system investing almost $30 million for our partnership school that's going to be on that corridor. If you haven't been through there and looked at it, like, it's coming along well, it looks very nice. It's something to be proud of, and that whole section highway, 182, should be lit up, and I hope that, that would be my goal, to help see that through. Your neighborhood, the citizens that spoke up here earlier, you know, there's, there's pros and cons. I think I could argue it both ways, depending on where I live, but, you know, you're going to have your street lighting, you're going to have, you know, your, your city police, your, your city full-time fire, fire staff protecting, you're going to have twice a week trash pickup, you're going to have rubbish pickup once a week, a lot of things that you don't have. Some people argue that I don't want all these codes, and, you know, and, you know, somebody's going to burn something, you know, typically, no one's going to care unless your neighbor reports, and unless you're burning in a, in a non-burns time-of-year drought situation. But, you know, a lot of this is, I, I don't know. I can see it both ways, but as far as to, someone mentioned fire protection, and I deal with that daily, we will be charged with providing water capacity for fire hydrants. If your current Clayton Village camp... If your current Clayton Village can't supply that, we will be charged with, and that's already in the figures that were calculated by Slaughter and Associates. Mr. Nagel provided those. And all the figures that have been provided kept us in the black, not at one point over the course of five years will we be backing up in the red. So immediately, we'll be moving forward. I think, Mr. Kemp, within two years, you feel like we're gonna have all the street lights out there and fire hydrants and everything. This is what, a three, if I understand it correctly, a three mile?
Three point one. Oh, I'm sorry, miles? It's three point one, square miles.
Square miles, roughly, three miles. It's not a large area. I think it's reasonable. I think it's realistic. I think it's manageable, and I think it's affordable. And I'm gonna support this tonight. I have not been a strong advocate. I had hoped MSU would have came on board, because I felt like that was low-hanging fruit, in that they would remain autonomous, we could count their citizens, and it would help as far as retail recruitment and grow our city in a positive way. But I feel like this could be a positive for everyone out there that way. And I yield, Mayor.
Going down, going down the line, I am gonna say more, but, okay. All right, Joel, if you would pull that up. I asked for the utilities department to provide me, can you take that so that that is view, yeah, to provide me what we have left from, of the annexed area from 1998? And the things about the annexation in 1998, I realize that Vice Mayor Perkins and I differ on this, but according to the annexation requirements, we have met all those requirements, because there is an economic feasibility requirement associated with, for example, sewer services. And in this instance, we have a number of areas that do not have sewer service, and that is because there is a cost per resident, for example, of fifty-one thousand dollars, and a cost per resident of a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, and a cost per resident of eighty-six thousand dollars. So there are areas that do not have sewer, but it is cost prohibitive, and that's one of the assessments that you're allowed to make in an annexation. So when you get annexed, from day one, the taxes that you pay provide you with police, they provide you with fire, they provide you with code enforcement, the opportunity to vote, planning and zoning, they provide you with the courts, they provide you with parks and rec, they provide you with streets and engineering. Those are the things that from day one you will have access to. Now, nowhere in an annexation ordinance does there, does it say that every street in the city that is doing the annexing has to be paved? But as of right now, with the exception of five streets, which we have only just now in the last six months gotten ownership of, so that we could legally pave them, they will be paved in this spring. The board has already provided an order that those streets will be paved. The funds are set aside, so there are no streets in this city that will not have either some sort of chip seal or paving associated with them where people are in residence. That is not to say that we have paving on a street that is nothing but a farm road, where tractors only go, because I don't think that's a prudent use of funds. But my point is, is if you live on a street in the city of Starkville, it has paving or is about to have paving. And so those other service, excuse me, those other services, sanitation you will have, that's an enterprise fund. If you don't have sanitation, you're not paying for it. Sewer is an enterprise fund. If you are not receiving sewer from the city, you are not paying for it. And water-fire protection, that is, that is the one thing that we, as a city, are working to do, and we only recently, I guess Deerfield was the last area that we finalized that, so that service is available. This one up here in blue is a fire protection, and that is in the process of being done at this point in time. So those areas that do not have sanitized sewer at this time are not dense enough to justify the cost. It's a prohibitive cost. But aside from that, the nineteen-ninety-eight annexation requirements have been met, and that is not a requirement, because it is targeted with an economic feasibility aspect to it. So I don't think that that's necessarily in dispute. The things that are recognized by the courts as reasons to annex, there are twelve indicia, which we've heard before, but I'm gonna read them out, because I know we have people in the audience who have not necessarily been here for these discussions. So one of them is the need for expansion, two is the path of growth, three is potential health hazards from sewage and waste disposal in the annexed areas, four is financial ability to make improvements and furnish services promised, need, five is a need for zoning and overall planning, six is a need for municipal services, seven is the presence of natural barriers between a municipality and the proposed annexation area, eight is past performance, nine is impact on residents and property owners, ten is the impact on the voting strength of protected minority groups, eleven is benefits enjoyed by the proposed annexation area because of its proximity to the municipality without paying its share of taxes, and then there are other factors. And this, these twelve are not distinct tests. These are what is weighed in the totality of the circumstances, and they are to be used as a guide. So this determination of whether to annex is based on a reasonable standard, and that is, that is case law, I'm reading it out of a case, so I'm not making it up as I go along. But that, that tells you what was considered when we got the proposal from Slaughter and Associates. That, to me, tells you why, part of the reasons that we are looking at this, each one of us, as I said, has our, has some of our own reasons for this. But I am, the narrative that we have not met our annexation, nineteen-ninety-eight annexation requirements, I think is a, is a false narrative at this point. I do believe that we have met them to the extent that annexation dictates what we meet. So I'm going to, I'm going to yield the floor at this point in time, but I feel sure there'll be some other comments to be made. Do we have anyone else? Alderman, anyone? Alderman Walker.
I agree with Alderman Carver. I think tonight, if we, if this is to be approved for either A or both A and B, I think it's really the beginning of what is the real part of the process, where there's gonna be public hearings, and then we're able to make a decision. But I, Mr. Kemp, Mr. Terry, based on the question that was asked earlier, if we're, if we have to run new water lines for fire hydrants, would that be coming from our city lines, or would that be separate from the Clayton water system?
Come on, come on up, Terry, so that we can, we can hear you as a part of the record, please.
So could you address, if you can, I know I'm putting you on the spot here a little bit, but could you address how, what water and sewer, what that might be in terms of those certificated areas, and how that would pay, play a role or not?
I think what I'd break it into is two different areas. Water would be part of the certificated area that's outside, that we would not provide. That would be provided through the existing water system. Fire protection would be a service the city is providing, and would be the responsibility of the city. We would be positioned that we would provide that off of our lines through our facilities to those fire hydrants for that area. And that comes into some of the numbers that I think we submitted to the consultant, is an estimate of how that might work, depending on how you wanted to go. So those are estimates of where that would go. Now, we will work with the other water associations, so I'm saying that's two, that would be one of the considerations, but we have the capacity and we could provide that from our system. Is that, is that maybe what you're asking?
From water, so in this case, to ultimately get the fire rating down to not be in the four X, but to be a four, it would require us to be able to provide that capacity for water where we could actually run hydrants off it? Does that just wanna make sure?
And that's exactly right. And I think from fire protection, that's what they're gonna look for, is capacity and availability to meet certain requirements for the fire. That's what they would rate it for, and so.
But we would not be paying, we would not be providing potable water for each individual residence? That would still be?
Only, it'd be in their certificated area unless there was a decision to transfer, but that's, that would be not moving over and taking over that certificated area. So that's, that's theirs.
And how about, what is, how would sewer work?
Sewer, right now, there is activity working in that area, and of course, all of that actually flows currently, I think, part of the discussion's coming back through Mississippi State. If we give an example, maybe to the north of town, the city actually installed sewer. But here again, that's driven, I think, as the mayor said, it's an economic kind of decision, because that is paid through the enterprise fund, and so you'd have to make that determination. So for sewer to be occurred, it'd have to be needed, I guess justified, and then some cost associated that would be borne by us. Now, right now, there are other people, and I think it was even mentioned earlier in the discussion tonight, people putting together a sewer piece, so that would be their service. That would be separate. It would be not part of the tax piece. It would be a separate fee back to those people that connect to that sewer. Now, eventually, all of that sewer flows back to our treatment plan, so there would be some impact. So our responsibility would be to make sure that we actually can treat and all of that, wherever it comes from, from this region.
Yeah, that, that certificated sewer area is just like a water certificated area. We would not encroach on that at all now that they've got a certificated area, so.
And the cost associated with that would be just like on the water side, there would be fees associated with that to support that enterprise fund or that, that, that issue, so that cost would actually be paid back to that provider.
Wait a second, you're saying just to run out to that certificated water system? What was that last thing you said?
No, I was talking back on the sewer piece.
On the sewer side, okay.
If, if someone else were to provide that sewer that's there now, if they had that connection, then there would be a cost associated with it.
To them.
To them.
To them.
It would not be coming back to the city itself. Now, there may be some charges for that system as it actually empties and is a part of the treatment, if we get part of a bigger network, but they wouldn't be sewer customers for the city of Starkville, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
In the long run, though, if they're going through the university, they end up being part of our system, which is, you know, we're right now upgrading our lagoon and that, so that we can service the university waste and what they take in as well. Is that correct?
Exactly. And that's what I was saying earlier, there would be an arrangement between the city or the university, or a combination with the other provider, just to handle the treatment component.
Right, okay. I saw your hand.
Not the collection. Now, I'm looking at sewer right now as a collection piece versus a treatment piece.
Okay. Alderman Miller, now I'll come back to you, Alderman.
Just a quick question, just wanna make sure that we're clear to the public. So, so no matter what, or we'll be up to par, or these citizens that will be potentially annexed, will be up to par with their fire hydrants?
That would be a service provided by the city, and we can manage that, because there's no charges. I mean, that's a service just for the fire protection, so yes, that would be a service.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Alderman Carver, did I see your hand?
Is that something that we can, in the timeframe between now and the next couple of public meetings, provide potential constituents with a rate for what they'll be paying with whatever combination of services that they have, depending on their location?
There wouldn't be a rate.
Go ahead, I might have misunderstood, I just.
Right, the, the fire protection is, is, there's no charge to any of our residents for fire protection.
That's, that's part of your taxes.
That's part of your taxes.
That's part of the sewer.
The sewer would be charged if and only if a resident tapped into our sewer system and received the sewer services.
That's right. Part of our collection system, so if we install.
Collection system.
That would be that point of connection. That's right. Now, if you're asking how long and based under, those are just estimates of how it might serve, we can give you a ballpark on that for size, if that was what you were asking.
That was what I was asking. I was just wanting, somebody might have a question for us of what, how much is it gonna go up each month, and we can tell them, you know, the collection rates, but.
I think that's a real good point, because that is a service, whereas water would be a product or something someone's purchasing, and that would not be in, on this, on this type, just a little bit separate.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Anything further? Anyone? Okay, do I have a motion?
I move that we authorize Attorney Chris Latimer, City Attorney Chris Latimer, and Slaughter and Associates to draft an annexation ordinance in anticipation of pursuing the annexation of areas A and B as, in, in.
Period.
Period. A and B, period.
All right. I have a motion for pursuing the annexation of areas A and B. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Alderman Walker. Further discussion?
Mayor may be recognized.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Let me briefly say for the record, you know, as an attorney, I have, I have learned to always respectfully disagree with opposing counsel when I'm in court. And the thing about it, we just flush out our facts and argument for the court to decide when there's no jury, and when there's a jury, for the jury to decide. So I said that to say that I respectfully disagree with our mayor of this city, that the annexation is complete from nineteen ninety-eight. She did correctly state the law from this state. There are a number of cases from our Mississippi Supreme Court that pertains to the subject matter of annexation. One of the lead cases is the City of Diberville versus City of Biloxi, a case that was decided on about March of 2013. There are twelve factors that that court set out in that case, among other cases, and the court charges the municipality at a trial with establishing that the annexation is reasonable in order for it to be approved by a court of chancery or court of equity. Couple of factors that I would like to briefly mention, just for the purposes of this record and tonight, for this, for this subject matter, is that one of the factors, I think it may be listed in that case, maybe factor number eight, maybe, if not, I'm close there, two, the factor about the past performance of the municipality, what it has done in the past with regard to providing services to an annexed area, what has been the time factor involved. This is where I disagree with the mayor very respectfully. It is my opinion that this city has not fulfilled its obligation to the residents in the annexed area. And before I go any further, I want, I got a permission to, to read a letter from one of my constituents who live on Bablin Road, and they told me I could mention their name, Darnell and Annie Johnson, at thirteen fifty-five Bablin Road. Mr. Attorney, I want this to be noted in the record.
Yes, sir.
Dated January twenty-two, 2019, Dear Vice Mayor Roy Perkins, we reside at thirteen fifty-five Bablin Road, Starkville, Mississippi, and writing to you regarding Bablin's Road lack of city sewage. We were annexed into the city in nineteen ninety-eight and still do not have city sewage. We love our city, and we pay our taxes. We feel as citizens of Starkville, Mississippi, that we have the rights and privileges of any citizen within the city. We have spoken to Mayor Spruill concerning this matter. Twenty-one years is a long time to be without the day-to-day standard services that most city residents enjoy. We are asking that this matter be taken under serious consideration by the mayor and Board of Alderman. Thank you for all that you do to make our community better. Sincerely, Darnell and Annie Johnson. And so I not only got this letter from these very important taxpayers and constituents of mine, but there are other residents on this road, and this road, for those of you that do not know what this road is, it was brought into the city in, in the nineteen ninety-eight annexation. That annexation, ladies and gentlemen, occurred during on about the latter part of nineteen ninety-eight, in either October or November that year, the, the city almost doubled its size, and most of this area fell within Ward Six. It would just have been a very onerous task, year after year, trying to get these services provided. And the other residents who talked to me, and I did talk to the Johnsons, as a matter of fact, I spoke to the Johnsons as recent as yesterday, and they told me that I could read this letter, they want this letter to become a part of the record, and I told them I would be sure to, to make it a part of the record. And these residents were of the impression, back in nineteen ninety-eight, along with all others who were annexed into the city, that the city would provide the services within, as they understood it, within five years and, or within a reasonable time period, but certainly not more than twenty-one years later, since October, November of nineteen ninety-eight. Based on my mathematical calculations, that's been in excess of twenty-one years, and that is an F performance for the city. F. And we want to represent what is, what is Area A or Area B, Area A being the area to the north, and you're gonna bring in some more areas that are gonna require sewer and roads. I see one road which is gonna probably fall into my ward, Barbecue Road, country road out there. No disrespect to the people who live on it, probably gravel road, no ditch, probably do not meet the city standards, Mr. Engineer. Then here you got the Vice Mayor, gotta come here and fight and beg and ask, get on my knees for money just get on my knees for money just for these people to get some decent quality of life. I've been doing this, colleagues, ever since, and say this respectfully, I've been fighting very fervently, very diligently and persistently since 1998. And I just wish that you were here to even have some idea of what I have had to go through just to help these people. That's why I'm taking my time on this tonight. We're talking about bringing this area in. You know, right now, you've got a lot of vacant land. I have seen this where you just have vacant land. But, once this area starts coming into the city, this land will become populated and it's going to be a lot of demands. It's going to be a lot of costs. You know, I saw the projected revenue, but you know, when you start talking about providing all of these services, it's going to take a lot of money, just like we're talking tonight about revenue to take care of these things. And, you know, it just takes a lot to get all this done. The question was asked to the utility director about the city lighting. It's not that easy, as I understand it, Mr. Attorney. You know, I have areas right now that, in the annexed areas such as Bablin Road, Rockhill Road. It's my understanding, you correct me on the law unless they've handed down some case lately, but you know, once we, the city of Starkville, and if the city of Starkville annexes this area into the city from the county, that does not and will not, unless there's been a recent change in the law, that gives us exclusive jurisdiction over that four-county certificated area.
True.
So, as to a street lighting, it's not that simple. See, I've been through, I've been through the storm. I've been through all this. I understand what this is all about. And you know, it's going to take a lot of money to do this. And these citizens who are out here from the University of the States, I understand what they're talking about. They bought their homes where they want to live. If they had wanted to live in the city of Starkville, then I think they have the means and the revenue and the ability to live in the city. So, we need to take that into consideration. If they don't want to be in the city, do not force this upon them. The 1998 annexation, there are some people who are in the city now saying, Mr. Vice Mayor, can we de-annex? You know, and I must respectfully, and the mayor is doing everything, and I say this respectfully, trying to advance her cause and present her case. So, when it gets to chancery, she can say these things or the record would be clear, rather, for it to get approved. But nevertheless, these things that we're talking about, these city services, that have not been done on Bablin Road, you bring these people in in 1998 and 2019, there are no sewer services? The roads, let's talk about, yeah, there are some roads in my ward that, they are a gravel road. Yeah, there's been some improvement, but does it take this long to get to this point? And I understand that there can be some improvements to these roads in the future, but all that should have been done before now. That should have been done before now. So, in regard to the city's past performance, in regard to the timeliness to providing these services after annexation, does it, in other words, is it reasonable to not have these services done 21 years after the date of annexation? Just ask yourself that question. Now, if we were being annexed, if I were being annexed into the city and they brought me in in 1998 and they've collected my hard-earned taxes that I have to work for, my family, my wife and all of us have to work for, or anybody else, would 21 years later be reasonable? If we were facing that situation, let's put ourselves in the reasonable man situation. No, that would not be reasonable. So, that's not fair to at least represent that we'll be able to do these things because when you start, you know, telling what the sewer cost will be and all these other costs will be as time progresses. And of course, and don't misunderstand me, I'm for economic development. That's just one of the many factors. And what these courts do, it's not no separate and distinct factor. They look at all of the factors, but you know, the chancellor wants to do, in my opinion, what's equitable, what's right and what's fair because Supreme Court has given guidance on what to do. So, that's a big factor there. And I think, you know, and like, for example, I saw in the chart there, and another factor here tonight, you know, what impact will this have on the ward lines? We need to see a ward map that is consistent with this proposed annexation territory. And matter of fact, Mr. Attorney, and just want to correspond and communicate with you, you know, you're very intellectual on this law here. As to that 10th factor, I believe, or the 11th, 11th factor speaks to, and you don't have to respond, lawyer, I just want to bring your attention to this about making sure that this annexation does not negatively impact on protected groups. And based upon my reading on the report, that would negatively impact on that. And I'm just, I'm not, I'm just talking about what the Supreme Court, I'm just addressing these things. So, because if you look at that annex area, I think most of it, if you just look at it right now without shifting the ward lines, it appears to me, given the current layout of the wards, and of course, it can't be that way because of the one-man, one-vote principle per Supreme Court law, but if it was to fall where it is, most of that in Ward 5, and then you've got some area in Ward 6, like Barbecue Road and, you know, and see what happens then when you bring these roads in that don't meet up to Mr. Engineer, that don't meet up to the city's standards, then they start calling Alderman, "Well, I want, I want my ditch fixed. I want my drainage project done." You know, it just become a lot of responsibility. And matter of fact, I got a letter from another gentleman this afternoon and he gave me permission that I can mention it, and I'm going to read a part from his letter. And he gave me permission to read, say, and he told me I can mention his name, but I'm not. He said, he sent this letter to Alderman. He said, "I urge you to discontinue annexation consideration and concentrate on the many problem areas already existing in Starkville. More constituents with more problems just means more problem for you in the long run. Any benefits to the city of Starkville will get are minimal compared to the cost." And see, and a few more things I want to address, is street lighting is not as simple. So, you got to talk to four counties. We've been down that road before. We've tried in the past, tried to acquire the service area of four counties. In other words, when you annex, if there's in the county like the Rockhill, the Bablin, Mr. Kemp, you know, you have to get the four counties. Four counties has just been very stern and unwilling to give up that area. And I'm not aware of any area where they have given up in the past. And let me just toss this in, Mr. Attorney, and the reason I'm talking like this is because it's very important for us to put this out there and I want you to, I want to say this right now because we're talking about annexation, but I want you to tell us the law, by the state law here later, because what we're talking about, see, now we're talking about this annexation where it is implicating the ability or the desire to hunt within the city. And this is annexation-related because this, in my opinion, would pose a very serious and a substantial threat to the health, safety and welfare of this city because it seems like there's some interest with the idea of annexation to accommodate all these things. And so, we have to look at all these things collectively, but in terms of the city's past history, no, the city has not fulfilled its annexation requirements. You know, we just respectfully disagree, just like lawyers do in court. You know, the mayor and I, we work together, but we just don't agree. That's just the bottom line, no hard feelings about that. I highly respect her. She's a very professional lady, you know, we just don't see eye to eye sometimes, but that's just the way of life. That's why we have seven people on this board and a mayor. But with that being said, you know, we just, 21 years to complete an annexation, that's just unreal. And how can we trust the city going to complete annexation within the next five, next 10? I mean, we can, yeah, we're going to do it. We got the money. That's what the 1998 board said. How do I know? Because I was sitting on it. I was sitting on it. I've been on there since 1993. They said that we're going to do it, but it did not happen. And these people were told that. That's why this lady sent me the letter and it didn't happen. And regardless of what it said after I finished talking, my position and my opinion is still, it is not completed. And so, why, you know, we just, in other words, it seems like the move here is to annex based upon, you know, we just want to get these businesses in because we want to get the revenue. It's a gateway to the city and that's fine, but at the same time, is that overriding enough to overlook our history? Is that overriding enough to, in regard to our history? We need to make sure that we look at these factors such as that because these are very compelling factors like this city's past history. And, you know, and there have been other parts of my ward that, you know, that were years after 1998, but way beyond the five-year period before they got, you know, it's, you know, I'm just going to say this on my close, you know, it's, with the 1998 annexation, most of that went into Ward 6. I tell you, gentlemen from five, just to say your respect, it's just been hard sometimes. I just real, I'm just going to tell you, shoot, just this straight. It's sometimes hard for me to just get a shovel of hot mix asphalt. It's just hard. It's just hard. It's not an easy task and these people are hard-working taxpayers. You know, when you work hard and pay taxes, you want, you want the city's services. That's why these people are still here at almost 8:30 tonight because they're concerned about their property interests, they're concerned about their financial interests. So, you know, as we go through this, I just wanted to take the time tonight, you know, I try to just speak when it's just a matter of urgent and necessity and this is a key issue. So, I'm getting this out here tonight and I'm, you know, not going to make these arguments there, but this is, all this needs to be heard, in my opinion. It needs to be talked about. I know people disagree with me and I respect the process. And let me say this. I respect opinions and I hope people respect me. I don't have to agree with it, you know, and as, and one of my former colleagues out here, you know, I've gone home many nights on a 6 to 1 vote back in our eight years together from 93 until 1. So, I'm just, you know, like we're all doing, but I want the city to know that history and we just have to take the time and have the patience to sit here because we're elected to do this to hear some of these things because like the gentleman from Ford just said, he's not going to be here and I'm not going to be here forever. And you know, and when I'm gone, I'm gone, whenever that may be. You know, he said he might not be around and I'm not going to be here forever. But, I want to continue to represent and provide the best, as we all are trying to do. But, Mayor, I felt it was necessary, colleagues, and thank y'all for your patience and we just had to have patience with each other, you know, just sometimes things have to be said whether we agree or disagree. And I just speak like this because just my passion, my fervency, not that I'm feeling bad toward anybody, but I, you know, but I just wanted to say that. But finally, this 1998 annexation, in the Vice Mayor's opinion, is still undone. The sewer service, we need sewer out there on Bablin Road. I want the Budget Chair to hopefully can find some money to get me some sewer out there, you know, when she can. I know she's a very creative CPA, can, you know, come with a proposal and we, hopefully we'll get those roads out there. And I got four roads. Let me get them on the record before I yield. A gentleman from seven, let me get them real quick. The four roads are Roundhouse. Yeah, that's one of them. Jesse, they won't give me all my easies. So, I told them they can't have no asphalt, it's too hard to, no, they can't have it, it's not legal. And we got Fandidale. We got Treasure Hendrick. I know our engineer going to come with a report sometime this year. We're going to chip seal them roads, going to be, do talk about them roads. If y'all get me some sewer, you'll quit hearing me talk about 1998. So, Ms. Sisdrunk, if you just, I tell you, it's going to be a Christmas in July when you get me some money for that, for that sewer system over there on, over there on Bablin. So, Mayor, with all those things, the Vice Mayor, the record, Mr. Attorney, let me, I'm going to pass this letter down to your lawyer for this here. And for all these reasons, I oppose any annexation for the city of Starkville.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I appreciate that. I do want to address one thing that you, that you mentioned, and that is four county. I don't, I'm not aware of four county not working with us to create street lighting because I know that there is four county down in, there's four county down in South Montgomery area and there is four county that if we put up streetlights or we ask them to put up streetlights, they will put them up and we simply are required to pay for them. But, that has happened, I know, in a number of areas. And I also know that they seeded an area on Stark Road, I believe, to us, not too, too long ago, maybe eight years or so ago, but there was an area that we got from four county at their, at their request and with their agreement with us. So, anyway.
Mayor may be recognized.
Well, Vice Mayor, I've got some hands down here. So, let me go with Alderman Sisdrunk and then I'll work my way back to you.
That'd be fine.
Mine is brief. As far as the streetlights go, Deerfield and Bluefield, which are roads at the very edge of town and are four county certificated areas, both have streetlights and have recently worked with, Mr. Kemp and four county have recently worked together to replace some of those streetlights. So, I'm sorry you've had a bad experience, Vice Mayor, but I have not had a similar experience.
Alderman.
I live in a certificated area with four county and we've had nothing but good things. Everything's positive, I would have to say about their services. We had several dark spots along the southern part of South Montgomery up to the city limits during my first term and I worked with Mr. Kemp in adding several lights on that corridor and no problems that I'm aware of. And they just billed us for what the additional lights we get billed monthly for those. Side story as to the sewer, I had someone just as recently, it was about 12 months ago, lives on Country Club Road, one of my constituents stopped me one morning and said, "Hey, when are we going to get sewer to my house?" And I said, "You should have sewer." And he said, "No." I said, "Y'all were in the 98 annexation?" He said, "Yeah." I said, "You don't have sewers?" "No." So, I immediately get back and call the Terry and check in and he had sewer out at the street. He just had never tapped in. He was still running on the septic, which was starting to have problems and backing up and, you know, having issues with that. So, he's tapped in. He never paid a fee for sewer during all that time, but he has since tapped in and happy and got sewer. Sometimes I think it may be an educational thing. People just aren't aware. I had someone just adjacent to the Country Club recently that did not think they had city sewer. So, and they obviously did and that's been worked on there. But, so, I think this, everywhere that you hear there's not sewer, I think there may be sewer, they just have not checked into it. It's not to say that case...
Vice Mayor, that's correct. Babylon Road, Babylon Road does not have that. It's one of the higher-cost areas. All right. Vice Mayor, I...
Mr. Attorney, let me just make sure, you know, my words were very meticulous. Let me just kind of talk this out with you. And you know, I asked you the question that, you know, there's this misunderstanding about what I clearly say. I asked you the... Do I have the floor, Mayor?
No, you do. You have the floor.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
But, I thought you were saying I misunderstood.
No, I'm talking to the attorney.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for the floor, Mayor. I'll announce when I yield. Mr. Attorney, I asked you the question that once we annex an area that is within the jurisdiction of four county, you acknowledge that four county keeps the jurisdiction over, but I never said that four county did not work with us because they have worked with us. It's a process, you know? In other words, that, you know, they don't give the area up. They have not given it up, but they have worked with us. And even in some of our areas, Mr. Kemp, even in Ed Haddaway days, they worked with us. So, that's just a mishearing on, you know, I just want to make sure that's clear. They work with us, it's a process, but they don't normally give up that certificated area that, you know, so you acknowledge that they keep jurisdiction over that. That's all I want to say.
They have control unless they deem to give it up.
That's correct. Thank you. Mayor, I yield. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor. The impression was left that perhaps they did not work with us and it would be difficult to get lighting, but I don't think that's, I don't think that's accurate.
Mayor.
Anyway. Alderman Carver.
And I guess the two issues we're looking at from the 12 factors, and I asked Mr. Slaughter the other day, Friday in the work session, and maybe I should ask the city attorney, the one that speaks to the protection of minority voters, and this is a half percent, I think it's 31.6 to 31.1, is that significant or can it be any decrease? So, what is your opinion on that?
The law doesn't specify what the level of increase or decrease should be. It's just a factor that a chancellor looks at through his lens of equity and says, "Is this fair? Is this reasonable based on all the totality of those factors?"
And then, secondly, the, has this been sufficient, in speaking in regards to the 98 annex, has this been sufficient attempt? Does it have to be like in good faith, like we just spoke to with the landfill and the acts we're taking as a board? Does it have to be in good faith? Or can you say, is it a percentile that you put on that and say that we've eclipsed some kind of benchmark and we've provided? Does it have to be every service to every individual that was brought into the 98 annex? Annexation or does it? Go ahead.
Not based on the wording of the 1998 annexation. The wording is where it's necessary and economically feasible. So, it's those two items combined where the service is necessary and economically feasible. So, part of the city's case of the annexation... So part of the city's case at the annexation hearing this time around, if the board goes forward, would be to tell the chancellor, these territories that have not received service yet, to put on proof why that wasn't necessary or economically feasible in the opinion of the city.
And showing that slide that was shown earlier?
Probably in context with that. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Little, I saw your hand.
I was going to ask you, would it be unreasonable to have Mr. Slaughter at the public hearings?
Oh, no. I think it absolutely would be.
I don't know if that was the plan or not, but I would suggest that.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Okay. Anything further? We have a.
Maybe one more time, Mayor.
Yes, Attorney Cladwell.
Board, I just wanted to remind you on the timetable that Mr. Slaughter talked about Friday, remember, he's got to get legal descriptions of all of his territory, which entails surveys, and so this won't be coming back the second meeting in February. We're probably looking late March, even April, before that first draft comes back.
Okay. And we do have a motion in a second. Do we have any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote on this, if you would please, City Clerk, if you would answer yea or nay as the City Clerk calls your name. Alderman Carver.
And again, I'm going to say that this is not solidify my vote. I'm doing this for the fact that we need to see this process to the end, so I'm still undecided. I'll vote yea.
Alderman Sisdrunk.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Miller.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Nay.
So by a vote of five to two, motion carries. Right. Thank you all. Next, on the board business, the item that was removed from consent was the appointing an ad hoc recycling committee of up to seven members to evaluate recycling practices in the city of Starkville. Alderman Sisdrunk, this one was yours, and for the purpose of discussion, if you would like to.
Mayor.
I guess you may.
The city of Starkville has been in the recycling business for several years, and to my knowledge, we've never recently done any sort of operational review. And what I'd like to do is form a time-limited ad hoc committee with up to seven people that would provide us a description of our current operations, review best practices out there in the industry these days, because things have changed since we first got into the program, and make any budget-neutral recommendations that can help us improve our recycling efforts. I'd like for it to be a three-month-long committee in that general time period, because I do want it to be something that's done and we get a result back. In terms of how the names come, I would say some board members have people that they would like to see on the committee. I would take the first seven names that come to us, either from board members or from people who express an interest, and bring those back next board meeting and let the board approve that committee.
Right. So you would have that, we would bring that back at the next.
Just to approve the committee members.
All right. With submission of names. All right. Alderman Carver, I see your hand, and then Alderman Miller, I believe I see you.
I know we spoke in discussion Friday, not to be more specific, but I would like to ensure you are saying I have at least one or two.
If you'll give me a name.
I have it till the next couple of days.
Okay.
All right.
I just wanted to say, and I said it on Friday, Alderman Sisdrunk, I really appreciate you spearheading this and putting it on the agenda. I get a lot of phone calls about recycling, just about this in particular, and ways that we can incrementally improve in recycling and always room to grow, and that's certainly a great service that we provide, and sanitation does a great job of providing that service. I wanted to, I guess, do we want to do letters at like a deadline? Are people going to turn in letters of interest, or we're just going to come up? I think that's a little bit of what.
I really have no drawthers. I'm willing to just take names if we want to do that, or people can submit letters of interest, but I would, I don't have any vetting process in mind. I'm open to whomever.
Sure.
Serving on that committee.
The first seven who come.
First seven get to be the committee, so.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Do you want to make a motion to that? Oh, it's on, no, we took it off consent. I'm sorry. You want to make a motion to that effect?
I move approval of formation of an ad hoc committee to review and evaluate our recycling practices.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion from Alderman Sisdrunk, and a second from Alderman Little. Further discussion. Alderman Walker.
Say that when we get done with this meeting, that's what I got to do when I get home, Mr. Wears. I got to make sure I get my recycling out.
That's true. Tomorrow's the day. Okay. All right. No further discussion. All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? All right. Motion carries. Let's see. And then we had consideration to call for a public hearing. We removed that one from consent. It was a revision to the ordinance, and I think Mr. Latimer has done some research as it relates to that particular matter, and I'll let you represent that if you don't mind.
Sure. Board, remember, after the work session, I was asked to look into the rights, duties, and obligations of people who may be in the annexed territory, who may have large tracts of land, and how that affects their gun rights. And so we did that, and the good news, for clarity purposes, is there's a state statute that is particularly on point, and that statute is 45953. And it says, for people who are in annexed territory, territory that's taken in by the city limits, if they have a tract of land of 10 acres or more, and if they're more than 150 feet away from a residence or occupied building on adjacent land, they can shoot their shotgun, air rifle, air pistol, BB gun, or bow and arrow. Secondly, if they're an owner of a tract of land of 50 acres or more, and they're more than 300 feet away from a residence or occupied building on an adjacent tract, they can shoot their centerfire, or rimfire rifle, or pistol, or muzzle-loading rifle, or pistol of any caliber. So those protections are afforded by state statute and will not change if they're annexed. They have those rights. So when we saw that state statute, it caused us to look at the city ordinance, and Joel's going to pull that up. And the city ordinance is in section 82.6, and what it says is that the discharge of any firearm is unlawful inside the city limits. So there's some inconsistency between section 82.6 and the state statute. So what I would recommend is just calling for a public hearing to amend section 82.6. That language would stay the same, except after the word "so," we would just put a comma and say, except this allowed by Mississippi Code, section 45953.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Any discussion of that? Any?
I've moved approval.
Okay. I have a motion for approval. Do I have a second? A second from Alderman Little. Discussion. Anyone? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Nay.
All right. I have, by a vote of six to one, motion carries. All right. Next item is claim stocking. I believe that's going to be our last. No, it's not. Never mind. A motion from Alderman Little for approval of the claim stock, a second from Alderman Miller. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Nay.
All right. By a vote of five to two, motion carries. All right. We've moved from consent under information technology, the lease purchase agreement with Active Solutions monthly cost regarding acquisition of 10 surveillance cameras. I have a motion for approval from Alderman Miller, and a second from Alderman Little. Discussion.
Mayor, yes, sir. Mr. Clemens, I'd like to know the, two things. The one, I'd like to know the location of these cameras, and I want to know who will have access to the viewing of these areas.
Yes, sir. As you can see on the map I've just displayed, the IT department and the police department have worked very closely together over the past few months to determine.
I'm going to turn off the lights. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. To determine the location of these first 10 cameras. This is just phase one of several phases that we believe will go forward. We have some existing cameras already in use, and this is just expanding. Thank you, thank you, Mayor. And you can see the red pins here are the first 10 locations. And this was determined by, and Captain Ballard's here to speak to this in more detail if need be, but, you know, they, the police department looked at their statistics, their number of calls per area, and utilized their expertise in helping identify these first 10. We'd like to eventually get up to 40 cameras in this project. It's just the number that we've kind of conceived of as we've gone forward. So we'll have very good coverage. You can see sort of a ring forming around the exterior of the city to address some specific needs that the police department has identified, and then starting over in the downtown and the entertainment district as well. And of course, like I said, this supplements the current cameras that we already have, for instance, on Main Street and Cotton District and some other areas. And as far as, to your question, who monitors this? The police department monitors this exclusively with the IT department's assistance.
So just, that's what I want to know. So just police exclusively with your assistance? That'll be.
Yes, sir.
Who's going to view these cameras?
Absolutely.
View these areas. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Clemens. Here's all ahead.
Okay. Well, I'll try to cut the lights.
Thank you, Mayor.
Lisa, if you got the code for the camera. I'll let you. I'll let you. Okay. Oh, thank you. I'm going to label those lights. All right. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Alderman Walker.
First of all, I would say, I think this is, I know we've been working on this, and the police and IT and others in the community have been working on this for a while to try to figure out how to do it, and Captain Ballard, I appreciate, and Joel, I appreciate y'all's work in trying to see this through. I'm not a police officer, and I don't play one on TV, and I certainly don't want to play one from up here. Certainly from conversations that we've had, believe that this, that you all believe that this is going to significantly assist in better policing our city. And you can't watch a television show, a police television show right now, and the first thing they do is they go look at where all the cameras are. I can see that as we continue to get more dense, as we continue to have areas around town that people want to be at, thinking about public safety is a huge part of that, and I just see this as one mechanism to try to improve that. And I certainly hope that, would like to be able to see a fairly rapid expansion. Once we get these 10 in and see how they're functioning, if it makes sense, if that is really something that we see is beginning to pay off, I think it'd be well worth our time and our investment to be able to do more of that. The one question I have is, this is a lease purchase, so in this agreement, after we pay the five years, we own the cameras. Is there language in the lease where in five years, if these cameras are not as up to date, is there an opportunity for updating those, or do we just have to buy leased new cameras?
We own these cameras at the end of the five years, so they become our property. But to your other question, the expansion, I believe after the successful implementation of these 10 cameras, we'll follow on with another 10 very quickly. Within this fiscal year, I believe we have the budget for that.
Thank you.
And I'd also like to just let everybody know that we have, Captain Ballard and I have been working with so many different entities outside the city as well, there's a lot of interest in this. And one thing that's made this possible, this type of camera and the quality that we're going to get is Mac South's help in backhauling this feed back to City Hall, so we appreciate their help as well.
Absolutely. And anecdotally, let me say that I was hoping that we would have some cameras that would give us some indication of who it was that plowed down three trees on Russell Street. Unfortunately, we don't have any cameras in that area, but I was hopeful, and maybe at some point in time, that's the kind of thing we'll be able to make a determination of.
Absolutely. And one of these is at the mill on Russell Street, where they just did the new development there at the end of Loomis and Russell. And so that may well have captured this individual on camera if that cameras in place.
Yeah. Had it been, well, he left his bumper behind, took the three trees out, so. All right. I have a motion in a second. Do I have any further discussion? All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? All right. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Last two items. Mr. Logan, would you like to come up and give us a little information on both of these items, please, sir?
Sure. Real quick, just if I'm not mistaken, Vice Mayor asked to read the authorization history, which kind of gives a quick background of these items. So for the first item, the application or consideration of approval to apply to host a certified playground safety inspector course. So the city of Starkville has been selected, it happened a while back, we were selected to host the 2020 Mississippi Recreation and Parks Association Conference, which will bring in between 200 and 300 participants in the fall of 2020 for the state conference. It will be hosted at the mill. So we recently were made aware of an opportunity, and actually, you know, saw that kind of a lack of offering of this particular course, the Certified Playground Safety Inspector Course, so reached out briefly to the National Recreation and Parks Association, and they forwarded this on. It's a simple application. So through this agenda item, we would implement this. So we would like to apply to host this Certified Playground Safety Inspector Course connected to that state conference. Makes a lot of sense. Will actually bring in people ahead of time. We'd bring them in the two days leading up to the conference, so we'd get up to two additional hotel night stays per person. Certified Playground Safety Inspector Course is a very, very intense course, two full days of classes plus a three-hour test. You know, it's something that not only parks and recreation professionals can take, it's something that daycare professionals often take, school administrators, anyone that oversees a playground is eligible to host this. It's a minimum 25 course participants, and I have no doubt we'll get that, and it's capped at 80, which is more the goal. So from my research, I could not find one that had been hosted in Mississippi within the last five-plus years, and not even, you know, within really a tri-state area, so it's certainly a need. And funny, the trainer, McAdams, the playground rep that was here earlier, he was already excited about this and interested in getting involved in some way, so it's something that